Do we have a order?
Yes, we do.
Dr. Day, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance, please, all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Item C, agenda approval. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to amend the agenda, please. I would like to amend.
What's your amendment?
I have three.
Let's do one at a time.
All right. First, I would like to discuss moving our board meeting from 5:00 to 5:15 or 5:30 PM.
So your motion is to change the board time?
To discuss changing the board time.
To discuss or to change?
To discuss changing the board time.
So to discuss?
Yes.
Not necessarily to institute a change, just to have a conversation about it?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Are you second in the amendment, the agenda, or to his motion?
I'm amending.
His, his motion. Okay, to his motion.
Motion fails.
The second motion is to discuss the possible implementation of a four-day school week instead of five.
So you're recommending we should have four-day school week instead of five in your motion?
No, his, his motion is again to discuss, not to implement a change. Correct?
Correct.
It needs a second. Is there a second? If there's no second, the motion fails.
My last motion is to reconsider our October 19th vote on scenario three with a $15 million ask.
So the third motion is to reconsider scenario three with $15 million vote.
There's a point of order here. You have to explain what you mean by reconsider. Technically, according to Robert's Rules, a motion to reconsider has to be made in the same meeting that the original motion was made. So technical reconsideration is out of order here. Now, maybe you mean something different than that.
I can make a motion to discuss reconsideration, or I can make a motion to discuss rescinding of scenario three.
Well, you have to decide what your motion is.
My motion is, according to Robert's Rules of Order, I did see that, that in the same day that the vote was taken, you can either do that or to, you want, you want to hurry up and go to it? Yes, sir.
Would you be specific what your motion number three is?
My motion originally, because you said that, not today, not this second, but to discuss reconsideration of scenario three with a $15 million ask.
So your motion is again to discuss, not to, not to implement any change. Am I understanding you correctly?
It does, it should allow for the, after the discussion, to either visit that issue or not, but in, in the original motion, these discuss reconsideration of scenario three, because you said that reconsideration as a point of order cannot be brought up after the vote. However, may we question that?
What do you mean by "may we question that"? I'm just trying to understand what your motion is.
May we question your comment on reconsideration can only be had on a day of the vote.
You want me to read Robert's Rules to you?
That's part of it. That's part of it, but I would, I would like, I would like either a second opinion or to, to know how a previous, a previous passed motion was, which, which was adopted, was either brought up again for discussion in another meeting, such as a health issue, or just rescinded. So again-
Are you using the word "rescind" or are you using reconsideration? You're, you're using multiple terms.
There, there is a legitimate motion to rescind a previous action, which means to remove the vote that was taken previously.
Yes.
Is that what you're moving?
I would like to discuss.
So you just want, you just want a discussion?
I would like to discuss rescinding the motion that we approved on September 19th on scenario three.
So if I fix your words, you're, you're making a move to rescind?
I'm making a motion to discuss rescinding-
He just wants to have a discussion.
Because Roberts will allow a member to ask for a motion to rescind?
Yes, I'm just asking-
That will include discussion, too.
I'm asking for a motion to discuss rescinding our vote on September 19th concerning scenario three.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it. Now, the maker of the motion is the first to speak to the motion. So give your reasoning. It's your chance to support your motion.
We have to approve the amended agenda.
Well, this is an amendment to the agenda, so we have to deal with this motion before we can approve the agenda.
You don't want to place it in the agenda somewhere first?
We'll have to vote on the amendment.
We have to decide if it's part of the agenda first, it seems to me, and then we'll decide on the placement.
Very well, very well. It is my expressed hope and expectation that the outcome of this extraordinary opportunity for the board to reconsider this scenario and accomplish at least three things. It will significantly lessen the outcry and hunger for knowledge of the details of our plan, our vision, the actual outcomes of the path we have begun to tread, so that LCS employees can wrap their heads and organize their lives around solid milestones and get behind the vision overall, together as a big family, LCS family. Number two, what our board can accomplish by this motion is, and I wish this could be my last point, because it's like a capstone. It's very important. We are going to engender trust in our board against the conception, preconception, and judgment of backdoor discussions away from the eyes of the public. By this motion, we remove these things, and we will not be working around the general public, specifically, of course, the teachers and those involved with this decision, and those who show up to engage with us will see integrity, they will see unity, and they will see that we are not in factions that are entrenched. Two, by this motion, we get to cancel the division that has begun over a major decision that will color every major decision from now on, moving forward. These two, two things not only point to integrity, but to trust, professionalism, sincerity overall. Not perfection, but blameless integrity. This is what we should strive for, and this motion achieves it for us. Finally, this motion to rescind this vote.
No, it's a motion to discuss.
To discuss the rescind, to discuss rescinding this vote reverses any mistreatment perceived by Sandusky Elementary School supporters, employees, and others that although rather whose school was named in the four scenarios and knowing that they were on the cut list in general, but did not experience the same feeling of impending danger of school closure as other schools were given the opportunity to have. The only example I could think of this is, you can watch a firework display show going on from a quarter mile away, and you say, "That was good, ah, that wasn't very good, ah, that was nice," or a teenager can sneak up behind you and put a bunch of fireworks at your feet, light them off, and that will get you moving. That will definitely get your attention, and there's a big difference. So when we took this scenario originally and altered it and came out with two schools, and then we had a big discussion, and we decided to hold off, brought back another scenario, customized with the $15 million, it should have gone through the process of allowing for Sandusky specifically to hear that they were in impending danger of closure before we voted it down. And everyone could see, from my vote that I made, that I was, I was contemplating something. Something was in the back of my mind, and I just didn't see what it was. That was one of the major things that I brought up, and that's why I want to not only discuss it, but I would like to reveal the things that I was, I was thinking of while I was making this vote. These three things are very important, and I believe that's worthy of discussing the motion to rescind.
All right. The motion is on the table. Other discussion on this motion to amend. Mr. Andrews.
With all due respect, I mean, not to him, just to everybody, I, I just simply want us to slow down. I just feel like we're rushing the process a little bit. We don't technically have a plan in place, even though we're working with Dr. Wodoka and Dr. Edwards to create a plan. But honestly, there's probably nobody in this room that wants universal pre-K other than Dr. Edwards more than myself. And for me to say that we should hold off on the process says a lot. And granted, Dr. Edwards gave us a November 1st deadline because she was on the impression that we wanted to renovate schools by the '24, '25 school year, right? And I understand that we're pressing for funds, right, because we're using CARES money. But does that come at the expense of displacing kids? And I understand, we, we're thinking about buildings, and we're thinking about walls, and we're thinking about infrastructure, but we also need to think about displacing families, and how do we facilitate those families into other schools? And I just don't think some of those details are ironed out. I don't feel comfortable moving forward without a plan. Simple, that, it's just that simple, right? Having had experience building a school from scratch, it takes a lot. It's more than just money. It's buy-in. It's, um, it's people understanding the vision and getting behind the plan, supporting the plan all the way through. I mean, I'm going to do whatever is going to be in the best interest of Lynchburg City Schools, and of course, I'm going to support the board, but my opinion, my opinion is that we just need to slow down and really think about what's being, what's at stake here. And then also, if we're preaching about community involvement and engagement and trying to get parents to tell us how they feel, but then yet we turn around and say, "Nah, thank you for your input." We're going to do whatever we want to do in the first place. That just doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. So I was one of the 70% of the people that voted for scenario one. If we had to choose a scenario, it would have been that scenario. But if we don't have to choose a scenario, I would much rather just step back for a second and rethink about everything. Now, granted, Dr. Edwards, the team, Dr. Wodoka, Amy Pugh, everybody has put amazing work and time into the project thus far, and I don't negate that whatsoever, but out of respect for them and out of respect for the community, and out of respect for parents and kids that we love, I think that we need to take a second look at this and really take the, the deeper dive, as we continue to say. So that's my opinion on the motion, so.
Other discussion? Dr. Carter?
I have to agree with Mr. Jalil and Mr. Andrews. I think some of us have been saying all the time, "Put the brakes on." And I don't want us to go back to any scenarios or go forward to any of them. When we got the facility studies, we were supposed to look and do a discussion, but that was interrupted by a plan, another plan that was not part of the original plans, and then we just came and did another plan. We don't need to do any more plans. We need to go and look at what variables do we want to look at, especially what things are we going to look at, because right now, this is not helping the staff, it's not helping the students, and I was a product of redistricting, and it's not as easy. Yes, you, they, I know Dr. Edwards and her team would do amazing work with making a plan, and she's already done that, and hate that we keep giving different instructions. But even in that, we were in gyms, we were in cafeterias, because it, there's a lot of students, and we're looking at 600 with this late, late, with this last plan of being somewhere, and you're going to have to find space. Like I said, if you go to any school, there's not space. Then we're thinking about staff, and, and people are jumping ship. They're, they're tired of this. So we really need to, I think, take, put on breaks, take some steps back, and look at what are our variables. We may come back to the same decisions, we may come to a different decision, but we as nine need to look at this and take a deeper dive.
Other discussion?
I would have to agree, because it seems to me that we have been somewhat abrupt in, in, in making our decisions. It's easy to pick this school or that school that's going to be closed, but you also have to think about, but what about the students and other people that that closure is going to impact? Do they go to this school? Do they go to that school? Do we need to rezone some students in order to make this work? What are the pluses and minuses? What are the needs of the populations of those schools? Because the population's needs are not always the same. All those things need to be considered, and is, is the decision going to be one that everybody is happy with? Probably not, but at least they will be able to say, "But my position was considered." They heard me, they understood what I felt, and they tried their best to hear and make a decision that was collaborative and in the best interest of, of all the students, and I think that's critical.
Dr. Day, you want to say anything? You are the maker of the original motion.
I am just concerned, as Dr. Carter pointed out at our last meeting, about changing course, changing course, changing course, and putting the community through a lot of turmoil every time we do that. It's not at all clear to me that we will come to a different decision if we proceed in this way. I think the best thing for us to do is follow through with the decision the board has already made. A lot of effort has already gone into working out the details of that, and working out the details is, as we see from the rest of our agenda this evening, a very non-trivial task. It's not something that can be done in a day or a week. We've got a month's worth of work ahead of us to work out the details of this particular plan. I don't think it's feasible for us to do that separately for several competing plans. It's been my understanding all along that what we would do is make a basic decision about which of these scenarios we would follow and then work out the details. It's like being at a fork in the road. The right-hand fork goes over the hill. You can't see beyond a quarter of a mile. The left-hand road goes around a bend into a valley. You can't see more than a quarter of a mile, yet you have to make that decision at the fork in the road and commit yourself to dealing with all the particulars that you find as you proceed along your way. That's the way I've envisioned this process.
I'm going to call the vote now, because we have discussed, Madam Clark, would you please-
I'm not finished with my-
Because this is just an amendment to agenda, so you can discuss when the motion is approved, you can make statements at that time.
I'm not finished, my pardon. Excuse me, sir, please.
I'm going to stop you. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll now?
Mr. Jalil.
Wait, what's the motion?
Motion is to rescind, so if you vote yes-
No, the motion is to put on the agenda a discussion.
Discussion, so.
I think this misunderstanding gives me an opportunity to clarify my motion, and that's why I'm going to speak.
So you're going to state a new version of your motion?
We are trying to solve a short-term concern with long-term actions. Dr. Gupta said this. We don't have a comprehensive strategic plan for each of these scenarios. I remember the illustration that it's like going to a doctor and giving us five or 10, a few things to do, that your body's running, falling apart, and you have all these things, and then you, you decide what you're going to do with your body. And it was also, a similar thing was brought up.
This is not a time to give speeches. I told you, you specify your motion, we discussed, we got to move on, we got to have the agenda in front of us. When it comes, if the motion is approved, you have plenty of time to discuss it.
You did ask me to present this motion, to even put it on the agenda, so if I don't do it correctly, there may be no chance for it to-
That's why he's asking you, what is your, would you like to amend your-
Why don't we ask him to restate his motion?
Yes, but you know, you did go, I'll just, I'll just quickly ask, you did go to other people to ask them for comments, right?
And you spoke first, yes.
Yes, why wouldn't it come back for me? Is there something about that?
I think he's allowed to continue.
Or continue.
Concerning TC Miller, it's nonsensical to close a school that has a waitlist like it does. Closing it will disincentivize-
Are you discussing your motion, or are you discussing the decision the board made?
I'm going to-
Seems to me you're discussing something other than your motion.
I'm going to bring out the motion right, right after this. So since closing schools may not be the best thing in LCS's long-term interest, I bring this motion to discuss rescinding our scenario three vote from September 19th.
So your motion is to rescind the decision made by the-
No, the motion is to discuss possibly rescinding.
Because he used the word "rescind."
I know. That's what he, that's what he wants you to discuss.
Okay, he wants to discuss the decision, okay. So if you're voting yes, you're voting to discuss and possibly rescind, that's what-
I need a chance to be heard, and this is not allowing it. So yeah, I'm asking for a, very simple. I'm at, my motion is to discuss rescinding the vote on September 19th concerning scenario three.
All right. Madam Clark, do you have it written?
Yes.
Would you please repeat the motion?
The motion is to discuss rescinding the motion that was made by Lynchburg City School Board on September the 19th for scenario three.
So if you vote yes, you're making-
Voting yes means we put it on the agenda to have a discussion.
And voting no means we don't want, not to have it.
It means we're not amending the agenda.
Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jalil.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Dr. Day?
No.
Dr. Gupta?
No.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
No.
Mrs. Laurie?
No.
It's a tie, and motion fails.
All right, so now we move to the main agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I have one amendment to, to the agenda, and that is, if we can put on the agenda long overdue recognition of two board members, Dr. Senna and Brennan, if we can do that.
Do you want to do it at this meeting or at a future meeting?
We can do it for, not to recognize them this meeting, but just to discuss doing it.
That we can do in the agenda, because we have to give them stuff.
Right, right, but just to put it on for this, so we can have it at a later meeting. Does that make sense?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? So your, your motion is to recognize the two previous school board members whose terms just expired
Yes.
On June 30th. Madam Clark, do you have the motion?
Yes, sir.
Would you please read it?
Discuss, a motion to discuss recognition of two previous- Discuss, a motion to discuss recognition of two previous board members.
Any discussion on that motion? Could you please call the roll?
Mr. Andrews, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Jalil?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta? Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Ms, Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Mr. Andrews?
Can I make a motion also to amend the agenda to extend public comment appropriate time the board sees fit?
Would you specify the time?
So it doesn't have to be thirty minutes, but it could be an appropriate time that everybody feels like this is appropriate time.
So just till we get to the end of the list? Or do you want to?
How many people do we have lined up for public comment tonight?
Um, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Twenty-two.
And it's one voicemail.
And one voicemail.
Twenty-three times three.
Some of those are speaking for groups, a couple of them are for groups, but most of them are individuals.
So, uh, are you specifying a time, Mr. Andrews?
Yes, sir. Can we extend it to thirty minutes?
Thirty minutes?
A thirty-minute extension, so the total will be, will be sixty minutes, correct? Okay.
Madam Clark, would you please repeat the motion?
Was there a second?
Oh, sorry, there's a second.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on it? Madam Clark, would you please repeat the motion?
The motion is to extend public comments for an additional thirty minutes. Made by Mr. Andrews, second by Dr. Day.
Alright, let's call the roll.
Mr. Jalil?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Dr. Edwards, you were saying something. I'll make the motion for you, to you to tell me what you were saying.
Yes, um, just because we have on the agenda, um, student reps, we have our two new ones here with us, but we also have guest student reps from Heritage Elementary. And, um, given that public comment is going to take an hour and I know parents are here, um, with their, with their students as well as our two student reps who probably have some homework that they need to get, um, home to do. If we can move them above public comment, that would be great. And then the public would at least get to hear from our student reps and our student reps won't have to stay out too late.
I'll make a motion to move item F to, uh, in place of item D.
Second.
Second by Dr. Carter, any discussion on this motion? So we are moving item F, uh, before item D, so they'll become item D and the others.
Right, right.
Sequentially.
Student representative comments will come first, then the public comment.
Yes. Any discussion on that motion? Madam Clark, would you please call, uh, specify the motion?
The motion is to move section F up to section D.
Yeah. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jalil?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Now we are back to the main agenda.
I would like to amend the agenda.
What's your amendment?
I would like to extend public comments by another thirty minutes.
To make it ninety minutes?
If needed, of course.
May I suggest we just extend public comments until everyone on the list has spoken?
Fair enough.
So I'm, I guess I'm amending. I'm amending your, your motion. I'm suggesting a, uh, substitute motion. That we extend public comments until all the people on the list, which I have been provided with, have had the opportunity to speak.
You're okay with the substitute motion?
Yes.
Is there a second on this mo- substitute motion?
Second.
Dr. Carter? I think we'd discuss, Madam Car- uh, Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jalil?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Alright, now we are to the main agenda. Are there any more amendments to agenda?
I have. A parliamentary note.
You have a motion, uh, men, to amend the agenda, not a statement, a motion to amend the agenda.
Concerning amending the agenda, that if new information is given between the time of the vote and now, that we can do a reconsideration instead of just it being at the day of the vote.
You're making a statement. I'm asking you, do you have a motion to amend the agenda?
We've already settled that issue.
Yeah.
Can't bring that issue up a second time at the same meeting.
Well, we didn't, we didn't go there. We went to just, just rescinding. Is that correct? We didn't go into reconsideration because of your statement. So if there is, uh, a new piece of information, does that, does that not allow for reconsideration?
Takes a motion.
Are you making a motion? Do you have a new motion on the table?
I make a motion to reconsider our September nineteenth vote concerning the adoption of Scenario Three with fifteen million dollars.
But as we've said before, that's out of order because the motion it refers to is not in the same meeting.
Correct. But there has been a lot of new information since that time. There has been new data, there has been new suggestions, there has been, um, tours, there has been a number of.
Let's take their motion.
Correct.
Alright, let's, so, would you repeat your motion to the clerk?
I make a motion to reconsider Scenario Three's vote on September nineteenth concerning the fifteen million dollar ask with Scenario Three.
Is there, is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Mr. Andrews, second. Is there any discussion on that motion?
There's a lot of data that has come, am I allowed to speak without?
Yeah.
So there's a lot of data that has come out, a lot of suggestions. I have one that I brought up that I didn't get to discuss today, but I may bring it up in the future. There's a lot of things we can do to make income, a lot of things we can do to save. One side of the coin is income, the other is expenses. If we go to a four-day work week, then we cut the expenses. If we go to a, um, a referendum, then we bring in income. So I think that we really can make something happen in the next few months if we just focus on solutions instead of just cutting out the bottom line. And, and really, if you look at the videos from the previous, um, meetings, it was mentioned a couple of times, a few times, that closing these schools will not result in immediate expense reduction. And the savings of five million for one scenario, three million for another, would not really even be effective until distant future. So trying to really address our expenses now will require something else other than cutting these two schools out.
Alright, other discussion? Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jalil?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
No.
Dr. Gupta?
No.
Dr. Carter?
No.
Mrs. Preston?
No.
Mr. DePaul?
No.
Mrs. Laurie?
No.
Motion fails.
We're back to the main agenda now. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move.
Mr. DePaul, Mr. Day, any discussion on the main agenda? Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jalil?
No.
Mr. Andrews?
No.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Student representative comments, Dr. Edwards?
Sure, okay, so, um, this is our first meeting where we have, um, our student reps with us. Uh, we do have our two high school reps who I will introduce in a second, who will be at every meeting. But we rotate through elementary schools and middle schools to hear from our students at those schools. So tonight, first up from our rotation on the guest rep is, uh, Mrs. Anderson and Heritage Elementary School students. And we have, and if I mispronounce your name, please correct me because it's important that we get this right on TV. Uh, Cassidy Anderson, Kamara Price. Kamira Price, Avrit Snyder, Aiden Yule, um, Owen Andrews and Caroline Goke. Yes, alright, well, they are going to share with us some of the wonderful things that are happening at Heritage, Heritage, I was about to say Heritage High School, Heritage Elementary School. I've already promoted you all up.
Gymnasium, she'll be a Heritage High.
Yes, yes. And I, I first just want to thank you all, thank the students for being here tonight, um, and joining us. And you didn't have to do it, but we appreciate it. And just remind everybody in the audience that all the world is a classroom. And students learn how to handle challenging situations and talk to one another from watching us. Um, so tonight, we're excited to learn from you because we adults can always learn something from you all as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Anderson and Little Orange Country.
Alright, great evening, Dr. Edwards, School Board Chair, Dr. Gupta and the Lynchburg City School Board. I am the proud and excited Principal at Heritage Elementary School, right? This evening, I have our newly elected SCA officers for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, as well as their faculty sponsors, Mrs. Catherine May McGuire, Title I teacher, and Miss Amy Stone, third grade teacher. They will share the exciting things that are happening in number one, what, Little Orange Country.
As Miss Anderson said, my name is Amy Stone and I'm a third grade teacher at Heritage Elementary School. This is the second year we've had a student council at Heritage Elementary School. Students in third through fifth grade selected candidates for each homeroom for the offices. Candidates gave speeches and made posters and all third through fifth grade students voted. The purpose of the student council is to give students an opportunity to develop leadership by organizing and carrying out school activities and service projects. In addition to planning events that contribute to school spirit and community welfare, the student council is the voice of the student body. Now our officer, officers and representatives will introduce themselves.
Good evening, my name is Kamira Price. I am the SCA president of, at Heritage Elementary.
Good evening, my name is Caroline Goke. I am the SCA secretary from Heritage Elementary.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Avrit Snyder and I am the SCA treasurer at Heritage Elementary.
Good evening, my name is Aiden Yule. I am the, I am a SCA representative of Heritage Elementary.
Good evening, my name is Cassidy Anderson. I am a SCA representative.
Good evening, my name is Owen Andrews and I am a SCA representative.
Now we will share with you our little pioneer pledge that we say each day and number one, what, Little Orange Country? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution. I will listen, follow directions and do my work. I will be honest and do what is right. I treat others the way I want to be treated. I think about the feelings of others. I come to school to learn and I will learn. By doing all of these things, I will be proud of myself and others will be proud of me too.
We will now share our Pioneer Pride chant. Pioneer Pride is going wide. We're prepared, respectful and controlled, determined and engaged. That's our goal.
We are excited to share with you a short presentation on the activities that we had during the for, the first quarter. And number one.
Thank you for all that you do for us and thank you for allowing us to come this evening to, to share the great things that are happening at Heritage Elementary School.
Thank you, Miss Anderson.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for all the hard work you're doing. Thank you. Great presentation. Dr. Edwards?
Yes, it's always wonderful to have the kids come and just share with us, um, through their eyes, the things that they're doing, experiencing and, um, just their general love for their school. And we see that in all of our schools, so I, I do want to note that and thank them, um, for that. Uh, we do have our high school student reps who, uh, will be here with us each and every month. This is their first month joining us. Um, and I am going to introduce them and I think the order tonight will be Heritage first and then EC Glass second. So representing Heritage High School, uh, number one, big orange country, right? Uh, Sala Erksk- Erkskin, right?
Erkskin.
Erkskin, um, will be representing Heritage. And then over at EC Glass later, we're going to have Lucy White.
Can just speak there if you like, it's up to you.
Whatever you're comfortable with.
Yeah, if you're comfortable, there you go.
Alright, hi guys, it's nice to be here, nice to meet you. I'm Sala Erkskin, as she introduced from Heritage. Um, this has been quite an eventful first quarter for us. We've had a lot of fun. That's a picture from the first day of school. Um, so, uh, as you can see, students excited to be here. Uh, moving into some student events of the month, um, that's a picture from our homecoming, uh, which we had celebrated a spirit week leading up to homecoming, several different themes, throwback. Um, it was a lot of fun, organized by Ms. Gafford, our leadership teacher and their students. Um, the game, also organized by leadership, following the game was a Hoco Hangout, which is like a bonfire. We do it every year as opposed to a dance. And I think it really, uh, helps us stand out in the community as a high school. It's very different and I, personally, I love it. Um, as well, coming up, we have VCAW, which is Virginia College Application Week. So Lynchburg Beacon of Hope has partnered with our guidance department. And during the school day, they're going to host different events to assist students in applying to local colleges within the state. And, um, they're even going to be hosting onsite admissions, so it's really exciting for our seniors this year. Uh, moving into some fall athletics, which as you know, is quite big at Heritage. Um, our football team, varsity record is four and two and JV record is also four and two. Um, varsity's next game is this Friday against Russburg. It's away. And JV will also be playing Russburg on the sixteenth. Uh, girls volleyball is currently having their game against Russburg, so wish them good luck. Um, their varsity record is three twelve and their JV record is zero fifteen, but I have faith in them. They can do it. Um, our fall cheerleading, so competition cheerleading hosted their first ever Big Orange Invitational on the sixteenth. Um, they saw support from their football players, their parents and the rest of the school admin. It was a really great experience. Um, they placed third at Broadway and they're set to host regionals on the twenty-eighth. Um, as far as recognition, Akira Millet and Marcus White. Akira Millet is class of twenty twenty-four and Marcus White graduated in twenty twenty-three. They both received the title of twenty twenty-three News and Advance Outdoor Track and Field Athletes of the Year. So having that talent in Heritage is really, it's just amazing. It's great to be recognized. Clubs, moving into theater, um, their fall show, Little Shop of Horrors, actually opens this Friday night. So excited to see that. Um, they're also running for the best live theater in Lynchburg, so go vote for them. Our coding club is started by two senior students, Aaron Jothy and Brady Manville. Uh, they took the initiative with, um, to Mr. Carter, I believe. And so they're starting up the coding club, which is something very different that we haven't had at Heritage and it really caters to those STEM-focused students. So I'm excited to see that. Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing that with us. And it's always a pleasure to see the athletics, the arts, the coding club. And I did hear you say that was a student-led club. So that is an opportunity, for those who don't know, for our students, if you have an interest, you can, you know, approach willing sponsor advisor, and you can start your own club. So I'm glad to see that. All right, Ms. Lucy.
Thank you all so much for having me tonight. I'm Lucy White. I'm the student representative from EC Glass. And tonight, I would like to start talking about our athletics. Next slide. We are so proud of our fall sports. They've been starting off really strong, working really hard. Football's got a record of five and one. They're playing Jefferson Forest this Friday for their senior night, and paint game, which benefits the Awareness Garden Foundation. JV football is four and one, playing JF as well on Monday, October 16th. Varsity volleyball is a strong ten and five. JV volleyball is ten and four, and varsity field hockey is three and six. Next slide. Next, I want to talk about the arts. So theater marching band. This year, EC Glass Theater Department has a season filled with really exciting shows, the current one being Play On. It's going to actually start showing October 12th. It's going to go 13th and 14th, according to some leadership in the EC Glass Theater Club. It's been a great experience, especially for the newer freshmen who are getting acclimated to the busy high school environment. The show is being directed by Aaron Foreman, who's the tech director at EC Glass High School. And we would like to give a special shout out to the marching band for giving us fantastic performances of this year's football halftime show with the theme of the classics. So next one, student life. Student life, I think it's been really buzzing so far. They've been participating in themes in the student sections at football games. And I think this is great because it really increases school spirit and unity among the student body. So far, the themes have been Hawaiian, USA, whiteout, and camo. And on the 16th of September, our student council worked tirelessly for many months to put on this year's disco-themed homecoming. There were no doubt some bumps along the way, but overall, we had a great turnout, and everyone seemed to love it. And next, I want to talk about the Central Virginia's, Central Virginia's government, excuse me, Central Virginia Governor's School, which is based over at Heritage. And it seems that our hilltoppers are settling into CVGS really well so far. They're enjoying the challenges that are given to them. One CVGS junior says, "I think Central Virginia Governor's School provides an excellent atmosphere for the rigor that it holds. The teachers are always willing to help if the students are struggling, and you can collaborate with your peers that also have a drive to succeed like you do. As it is difficult, I feel I am being challenged in a good way that will provide me with many skills as I go into college." So really proud of all of the Griffins. This month is National Bullying Prevention Month. So next slide, please. Unity Day is an annual event occurring, occurring during National Bullying Prevention Month in October, which promotes joining together to create healthier communities in our schools through kindness, acceptance of differences, and inclusion. And EC, the EC Glass student body is encouraged to wear orange on October 18th to show their support for those who feel they need it. And the next slide, I would like to congratulate those who may have received LCS AP honors awards over EC Glass. So back in September, many, many students from EC Glass and Heritage were awarded with diplomas, certificates, and awards for high achievements on AP exams. Six students from Glass were awarded with the AP Capstone Diploma. Two got the AP Seminar and Research Certificates. Fifteen received AP Scholars with Distinction Awards. Twelve qualified for the AP Scholars with Honor. And 64 students qualified for the AP Scholar Award. So congratulations to all the high achievers. That's all I've got for you. So thank you so much for your time.
I like how you threw all those wonderful stats in there and said, "That's all I got." That's a lot. So again, appreciate just the wealth of information that you shared with us. And again, highlighting the school for all of the wonderful things that it does, from athletics to arts to scholarship, to the Griffins at CVGS, and also other opportunities for students for early college dual enrollment. There's a lot going on in your high school. So both of you should be very proud, as we are proud of both of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards.
And if you need to scoot out now because you have some rigorous homework to do, you may do so.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not shooing them away.
No, we're not. We're not.
In the interest of time, I don't have any comments, so we move to Vice Chair there for public comments.
Okay, so this begins the public comment period. I will read briefly the pertinent policies pertaining to this. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures. Make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to their official duties. Engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others. Or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at school board meetings is 30 minutes. Public comments are reserved for the public to provide input. The board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in the discussion at this time. Now, as everyone is aware, the board has agreed to let everyone who signed up have a chance to speak, so we're not going to cut things off at 30 minutes. But another aspect of our policy does specify the order in which the comments will be made. At the top of the list are students. After that comes staff. After that come parents. And at the end will come community members. So we will begin with the students. The first student on the list is Kevin Larkins.
Hello. My name is Kevin Larkins, and I'm a fifth grader at Sandusky Elementary. For many years, Mr. Womack has told us, "We do it better when we do it together." Every time I hear that, it makes me feel like I'm not alone. And if you close down the school, we won't be able to hear his encouraging voice anymore. That is just one of the many reasons I love Sandusky. My teachers challenge me to discover new things, like Mrs. Lewis does in depth. They are always there to help me when I need it. My gym class with Miss Smith, Miss Smith is the most fun I have all day. Sandusky Elementary is more than just a school. It is a place where I and other students come to learn and grow. Closing Sandusky Elementary would hurt our students, our families, and our entire community. I am asking you to please vote against closing Sandusky Elementary School. I've been lucky enough to do it better for the last five years because I've been at Sandusky. Please help us continue to do it together for the next 50.
Next is McKinley Alexander.
Good afternoon. My name is McKinley. And the reason this school is special to me is I have a very nice principal, a very nice teacher, and my sister used to go there. And that's why my school is really special. And if the school shuts down, there's not going to be no more Sandusky Spartans. And Sandusky Spartans are respectful, responsible, and ready. And we do it better when we do it together.
The next student's speaker is Jeff, I hope I don't mispronounce this, Jefferson Royal. Okay, my apologies.
Hi, I am a, hi, I'm Jefferson Royal, and I am in fifth grade. Sandusky is a proud and fierce school. Not only that, but it's a home, a community, and it would bring us together for iconic slogan, "We do it better when we do it together." So we are coming together to fight, to save our school. I believe no school should be closed, so of course we can't give up. Closing our school would do so much to us mentally, and it would, and it would be unfair to us and our parents. We hope you, we settle, we, we consider your decision. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Okay, those are all the students that I have on the list. Next, we move to staff. I see one staff member, Mr. Womack, Principal of Sandusky.
Good afternoon, board. To my colleagues at central office, good afternoon. Thank you all for this opportunity to address you on this evening. I am Derek Womack, the proud Principal of Sandusky Elementary School. And I want to thank you all, board, for your service. I know it takes time. You take time out of your busy schedules to do what you do. And believe me, it doesn't go unnoticed, as we have some of those things that happen at Sandusky as well, taking time out of our day in the evenings after we leave. And so I've toyed and gone back and forth with, do you say something, do you not say something? What do you say? Do you go before the board? I find myself in the position of being a member of an LCS family, who the board approved for me to be at Sandusky Elementary School. And when they approved for me for hire at Sandusky Elementary School, there came along a list of expectations, the expectations that you follow through with, the board expectations, the rules, the guidelines that the board has set forth, that you don't reflect negatively upon the board. And I've done my best for 29 years to uphold those guidelines and those standards. Some of you are able to testify to that, as you've been in buildings previously. And so in your buildings, you were able to uphold the standards and the expectations that were set forth within those buildings. But then I found myself on the other side of saying, now they're getting ready to close your school. What do you do? What do you say? What can you say? What should you not say? Because this is a board that hired you to do a job. So what do you say when that board then decides that the school that they assigned you to is one that they no longer want to be in or have open enrollment, have enrollment for the coming years? What do you say, understanding that, yes, your decisions are hard. Yes, you have funds that you have to look at. You have to appropriate those funds according to what's given to you. What do you say, Mr. Womack? What can you say during this time? Because you find yourself still having to uphold the standards and the guidelines that the board has put forward. But you're on the other side feeling as though, not my school. Yes, not my school. Not TC Miller, not Deerington, not Paul Monroe, not Heritage. What do you do, Mr. Womack? What do you say? So that you don't come across as going against what the board is saying, while at the same time being a person who is a resident of Lynchburg, whose children, 29 years ago, I have been working here. And I brought two daughters through Lynchburg City Schools and a son that's in high school now. What do you say? Sandusky means so much to me. Lynchburg City Schools, I've been here because 29 years has meant so much to me. What do you say? What do you do? And so you're going to continue, Mr. Womack, as long as 5828 Apache Lane is open, to do what they hired you to do. You're going to teach the children. You're going to love the children. You're going to nurture the children. You're going to continue to do that. But they also hired you to advocate. Come on back to Lynchburg City Schools. And I've done that. Why? Because we, every child, by name and by need, not by number, not by 7.2, 7.5, 15 million, but every student by name and by need, when they come through that door, they have an advocate in me, while still, yes, following what you've expected me to do as the principal at Sandusky Elementary School. Advocating every child by name and by need. Advocating. What do they need? They need a sense of belonging. Sandusky is a sense of belonging. TC Miller is a sense of belonging. It's a family. Sandusky is family. Sandusky is better together. And I'll leave you with this. Please understand and accept the intent for which I stand here. It's because it's more than just about Mr. Womack. It's about Sandusky. It's about all schools. Anything worth fighting for, or anything worth having, is worth fighting for.
Thank you, Mr. Womack. I don't see any other staff members on the list. So we'll now go through the parents that have signed up. The first is Colleen Larkin.
My children have been in Lynchburg City Schools for almost 10 years. I know many of these amazing parents and people who are going to speak to you tonight are going to talk about the impact of school closures on the kids. But I want to talk to you tonight about the impact of school closures on our teachers. I've heard this board say time and time again, "We have a shortage of teachers." That is not a secret. In the last board meeting, Dr. Gupta talked about them leaving and going to other districts. Although that is not a shocker to me, it is a little surprising when I think of Sandusky Elementary. My first son came through 10 years ago. When I walk the halls in Sandusky, I see almost all the same faces I did 10 years ago. Those people have found a home under Mr. Womack's leadership. They love working there, and our kids love them. Imagine those same teachers who we love and see all the time, going home on September 19th, hard day of work, and getting a text from someone, the place you love, the kids you nurture. That's all going away, without warning. And that part can be debatable, but without warning, in our opinion. They still had to go to school that next day. They still had to look these precious babies in the face. And not only did they have to do everything they normally did on a day, but they had to reassure those children it was going to be okay, when they themselves don't know if it's going to be okay. In any given day, a teacher is a counselor, a nurse, a referee, a party planner, a comforter, a detective, a confidant, and an educator. They are the backbone of Lynchburg City Schools. Yet we are pushing them aside and not taking the time to hear them. In a 2021 survey sent to LCS staff by Lynchburg Education Association, there was a question about what positive things were happening to them during that year. They could pick three things. They could pick coworkers are positive, kids are positive, their principals, principals are positive. They did pick all of those things. But not a single teacher, not one, in all of Lynchburg City Schools, said that a positive thing in their environment was support from LCS administration. Not one. Would you want to work in a place that didn't support you? Would you want to work at a place that marginalized you? Would you want to work at a place where even though you have excellent performance, you might lose your job? I wouldn't. The teacher shortage is a problem, and situations like these are making it worse. These are the very people that make our district great. These are the very people that make Sandusky and TC Miller great. You keep saying it's just about the building. It's just about the building. The building's bad. We have to replace the building. That's because you don't know the people who are in the building. Without them, we are nothing. Without them, our children do not get the education they deserve. Without them, our children do not get the education they deserve.
Thank you. Uh, next on the list is Carly Schaefer.
Um, I'm for a group TC Miller PTO.
Are you Carly Schaefer?
I am.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm here, uh, from TC Miller PTO to discuss the concerns of proceeding with Scenario Three. Community input supposedly matters. Scenario Three was second to last on survey vote preferences regarding who to vote, who to close. The only one below it was Paul Monroe. Almost two thousand of us have signed a petition to keep schools open. We have turned out in record numbers for school board meetings. We've received email after email. We're told that parents should have a seat at the table, but we remain unheard. But let's say you don't care what your community thinks. Let's just look at our facility data. TC Miller ranks above five of the other schools for our building score and Paul Monroe and Bass are only one point away. We have expansion capacity. Some of you have toured our bill- building and realized it's completely ideal for an elementary school and is built like a tank. So, facilities too point to keeping TC Miller open. Perhaps it's the academics. But no, we're accredited, have some of the best attendance in the district. With a majority of low-income students, our proficiency scores are excellent. At a level one for both math and language arts. We're a school of innovation, you've heard what we offer. And yet, you are proceeding with Scenario Three. Why? I've read the Board docs for today and remain perplexed why these actions seem like the best path forward for LCS. September nineteenth, a version of Scenario Three was presented by Dr. Day individually in a work session and voted on in less than an hour. To make the most significant decision for LCS in the last decade in a work session with no public comment was inappropriate and broke community trust. The result was that almost six hundred children found out that their school was closing with no information on where they'd be going, when, or how. After only one normal year post-COVID, you took their stability. Developmentally, this is extremely harmful for children whom you are meant to serve. Teachers and staff received no communication about their future or their value. This is not how we achieve to- teacher retention or positive work cultures. And tonight, you won't even discuss it. Rezoning and the new enrollment projections have not been determined. Making this decision on declining enrollment is misleading. Our application numbers that are a hundred plus and Lynchburg's young population is only growing. Making this decision on hoping to convert to a whole-school preschool fails to understand the layout of the building, the many stairs and the needed renovations to meet preschool code on every floor. Additionally, a deep dive on the maintenance and utilization reports was never presented. Scenario One was thrown out because of a single conversation Dr. Day had with a former principal of Fort Hill. Dr. Glover, the current principal, stated he needs one building with more space and therefore, Scenario One would support their needs. The most frustrating piece, all the data being used is one-dimensional based on facilities. Where are the programmatic studies? Matriculation reports, academics, curriculum, culture, stream, performing arts data? This begs the question, leaders. How do you measure value in education? Students, teachers, academics, curriculum, equity, culture, not a simple algorithm that consists of two oversimplified numbers. You'll hear from administration the many routes you could take to push Scenario Three forward, but we maintain that you should not proceed with this. According to Board docs, two rezonings will have to occur or you have schools open in limbo for a year, creating student distress, a teacher exodus, and postponing cost savings, which is supposedly the whole reason we're in this mess. We're told that the programs will move. You can't simply pick up programs and culture and move them like furniture to a new school. They take time, dedicated teachers, resources, grants, and an established culture. You're also choosing to close schools in Ward Two, which has the highest density. Remaining schools could rise to a ninety-two percent capacity, creating issues in discipline and student achievement. You say these matter, yet this decision does not support those metrics. Financially, this doesn't solve the deficit. What are the offset costs? Costs of converting. The operational costs will remain as well as the instructional costs. By closing TCM, LCS loses one point nine million of federal aid. Fifteen million is going to Bass. Why? Why aren't we investing in a similar-sized school or schools with four times the applications in a zoned neighborhood that can grow? Being so worried about taking action means that you're losing sight of whether this is the right action. The most important decision LCS faces needs more thought, time, and to prioritize students and thriving communities. Build on the seventy percent call for Scenario One. Build on our school loyalty. Please rescind and consider the vote, potentially at the next meeting when all members are present. Create a viable plan while rezoning and keep what is thriving in our system or we will not have a school system left to save.
Thank you. The next speaker is Nettie Webb.
I'm Nettie Webb and I'm here to say that I'm disappointed in the proposed revived Scenario Three and the refusal of the school board to adequately consider all data, new, old, quantitative and qualitative. The manner in which the school board made the decision to close Sandusky and TC Miller was a disservice to the community for many reasons, including a lack of consideration, archaic analysis, short-sighted perspectives, closed-mindedness, uninformed decisions, and extensive diversity and equity concerns. When we discuss diversity and equity in Lynchburg, we must acknowledge the difference between the city schools and the city. Lynchburg City Schools is thirty-one percent white and sixty-nine percent minority. The city is sixty-four percent white and thirty-six percent minority. If you have a school that is diverse, it must be representative of the school system and not the city. Closing both Sandusky, TC Miller, and zoning for close-to-home will have severe equity implications. There are two separate components to this. First, Ward Two has the densest student population. This was presented specifically by Dominion Seven with their population density maps. And closing a school in Ward Two, along with Sandusky, and then also zoning close-to-home will put undue pressure on Ward Two schools and create increased class sizes for our most vulnerable students, which will increase the achievement gap. Secondly, zoning close-to-home will decrease diversity and this has been acknowledged by administrators. This leads, ignores the fact that diversity, quote, "leads to better discussions, decisions, and outcomes for all", and that it is associated with less peer victimization, less loneliness, and greater quality of education, sense of safety, creativity, and ovation for all students. In Lynchburg, every school except Bedford Hills and Paul Monroe have a between sixty-five to seventy percent minority students. Many of these schools pull from Ward Two areas because they have forty percent more minority students in Ward Two and also have the most economically disadvantaged students with the lowest median income. By closing this school and zoning close-to-home, you will extremely increase disparities between schools. The Ward Two schools and the schools of innovation were created to address these inequities. TC Miller and Darrington were opened as programs magnet schools as schools of innovation to bring resources to students who would not have access to them. This abides by the fact that, quote, "genuine education equity" will be achieved only when schools serving low-income children mirror the options that affluent parents can afford. You are not abiding by this and you're doing a disservice to our schools. I vote for you to urge the vote to rescind this offer until we have full school board members here and present.
Thank you. Uh, the next speaker on the list is Casey Echols.
Good evening. My name is Casey Echols and I urge you, somewhere over here, um, I urge one of you to motion to table a discussion of rescinding or reconsidering the vote for Scenario Three until all about board members are present. The teachers of Sandusky, the teachers and students of Sandusky and TCM deserve more than that. TC Miller School for Innovation should be protected, cherished, and should serve as a model for other elementary schools in our district. The academic, attendance, and behavioral metrics all provide solid proof that TCM is a highly sought-after school. One of the more important reasons to keep TCM protected is for its size and its class size. Here is a quick overview of scholarly research about small schools with small classes. Students are less likely to have discipline problems. Students feel safer. Learning disabilities and challenges are identified earlier. No one has talked about that category. Minority students perform better after two years of small classes. Students in small classes have about three months more learning in those than are in classes of twenty-two students or more. Students from low-income families are more successful. Teachers are more likely to continue working in a school that supports small classes and feel like they make a difference. Students in small classes in elementary school develop stronger skills needed for middle school and for high school. Studies also show that elementary students who have three or four years, three or more years in small classroom, increase the odds of graduating by sixty-seven percent. What is better than an elementary school with small classes? A small school with small classes. Small schools have tremendous outcomes. They especially help the economically disadvantaged and minority families. LCS has sixty-eight percent minority enrollment, as Nettie just said, and forty-three economically disadvantaged enrollments. And many of us know that both stu- students fall into both categories. LCS needs TC Miller and Sandusky. Having a small school of innovation with small class sizes is appealing to the city and anyone looking to relocate. LES, LCS is competing with private schools because of class size. Almost five thousand and five hundred students are enrolled in private schools in the area. We only have more than like almost eight thousand. That's a lot. The ratio for most schools goes, private schools goes from seven to one student/teacher to fourteen to one with LCA at seventeen to one student ratio. LCS's ratio is seventeen to one and TC Miller is right there with it. We keep losing students to private schools, which includes using, losing parent and community support. We don't need to, we have these schools right here. The idea that you don't want to take time to see what is over the hill in the fork of the road before you take six hundred kids behind it in a school bus is infuriating. If you take that side of the fork of the road and not know where your students are going, like my sister said, you won't have any more schools to take them to.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cindy Capps.
Good evening, Board. School Board and community members, there is no plan. School Board members are meeting in pairs and smaller groups off the record. School Board members are meeting with various city council members off the record to make plans and decisions out of the public eye and outside of the proper channels and procedures, all because they know there is no plan in place for the, for them to push the scenario that they are so desperately trying to push through with the help of city council's approval of fifteen million dollars. They are grabbing at straws, recommending renovating all elementary schools, yet closing a neighborhood school. And this saves us money. How? The superintendent promised to discuss the impacts and concern of the scenario in question with our parents, staff, and our administration, and we're still waiting for that opportunity. Please recall the discussion and call for a revote on Scenario Three. Slow down and look more in-depth at each scenario and actually develop a plan before plowing ahead. Our children, staff, administration, and community are worth the effort. That's the investment on which you need to be focused. In Dominion Seven's facilities report, they said that the division needed to create next-step plans, uh, options for renovation, expansion, consolidation, enclosure, repurposing, revised attendance zone for redistricting, operational maintenance, transportation costs, which were to be provided by LCS, short-term maintenance, repair lists for immediate concerns, and energy savings opportunities. This study resulted in the rebuilding of Sandusky Middle School and Heritage High School and Sandusky Elementary was the next on the list. Large-scale repairs and maintenance at SES were delayed because Sandusky was being rebuilt. And now, we are realizing all that we should have been doing. We switched superintendents and consulting teams, so none of this was ever developed into a new plan. Dominion Seven also said this about Sandusky Elementary. The core classrooms were designed around common areas that could serve as extended learning areas. These classrooms are also larger than the VDOE guidelines, which is a plus. For these reasons, the school is an excellent candidate to renovate. Sandusky was also named one of the highest utilization schools in the division in this study. Sandusky is one of only a few elementary scho- LCS elementary schools that is handicap accessible and all but one of the classrooms from grades K to two has a toilet in the classroom. The study showed that families are moving from the downtown areas and into neighborhoods. So, how does it make sense to close a neighborhood school? Closing Sandusky would negate the close-to-home rezoning because SES is already a neighborhood school and it serves a very broad geographic area of children. Last but not least, it is the school that residents for over one thousand new apartments on Gravesmill Road will be zoned for children to attend. The Board is calling for two possible rounds of close-to-home result, rezoning, resulting in two different school transfers for our babies, for our students, giving our students zero consistency and ensuring academic performance could plummet. These students need stability and Sandusky is the only stability and consistency that some of our students know. They need to experience success. They need to experience belonging and the community. Sandusky Elementary students, family, and staff experience this together. We are more than a building. We are more than walls and a roof. We are a family and a community in which our students flourish and feel safe and supported. If you're, you're not trying to close a building, you're trying to disband a family that relies on one another, grows together, trusts one another, and meets one another's needs. Because at Sandusky Elementary, we do it matter because we do it together.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carla Jones.
I am speaking on behalf of a group.
Um, what is the group?
Save Our Schools.
Are you the only person speaking on behalf of that group?
That is correct.
Okay, then, then you're allowed five minutes.
Okay. My name is Carla Jones. I'm here tonight to talk more in-depth about solutions. Administration and the school board claim they aim to be fiscally responsible, yet when presented with possible solutions other than closing schools, they were written off without an actual investigation into their feasibility or savings. According to our data analysis, these areas should all be seriously considered. Increasing enrollment is the first solution. I'm not gonna speak to that. A colleague of mine, Abby, will. Solar PPAs. I spoke directly with Sun Tribe Solar out of Charlottesville. They focus solely on installing solar panels for school districts. Here are the highlights. School districts our size are saving millions. Energy rates went up in both Dominion and Appalachian Power by twenty percent last year alone. If we were spending a million dollars on energy, energy before, we are now spending one point two million dollars with nothing changing. So, why is this not something that is being seriously considered? We were brushed off saying LCS applied for grants last year, but were unsuccessful in securing them. PPAs are not grants. Grants are extremely labor and time-intensive. PPAs are not. PPAs are extremely hands-off for the school district. The due diligence process is simple. Provide energy bills for the past twelve months and the roof age of each school. If a school needs a new roof, it can be built into the PPA, providing a new roof and still saving money. There is zero cost to the school district for the entire process until the first kilowatt of energy is used on the roof. You can bypass some of the bureaucracy utilizing cooperative procurement, which again, saves resources in the form of personnel and red tape. And the icing on the cake? They provide a full curriculum integration program for every grade level and for CTE. What a better way to meet Virginia twenty-fifty green goals than to prepare students for twenty-first century workforce green jobs? What does LCS have to lose in exploring this option? Public transportation. We have provided a close look at the potential savings that could be realized using public transportation for high schoolers and the many benefits of doing so, like in eliminating bus driver shortage, academic benefits to students, and reducing absenteeism. The only response from this proposal is, that's been looked at already. Then share more about what was discussed. What was the outcome? How long ago was that considered? What were the pros and cons? You can't dismiss a potential solution just because it may not have worked in the past. Has there been a discussion with GLTC about potential collaboration? I spoke with Josh Moore, the general manager of GLTC, who said he would absolutely be open to a discussion about a potential collaboration with LCS. We never gave the misconception that this is an easy fix. Of course, it would take coordination and collaboration, but how do we know it won't work if we don't have the discussion first? Perhaps what didn't work in the past may work now. Admin costs. Efficient allocation of resources is crucial for educational institutions to provide quality education while maintaining fiscal responsibility. In Lynchburg, admin costs have increased by one point eight percent of the fiscal budget since twenty eighteen. This totals a greater than three point five million dollar increase in four years. These increases have not led to any increases in student performance and readiness and should be reevaluated to see if they are necessary. For districts of similar size to Lynchburg, the recommended national average for admin costs is five point five percent of the district's fiscal budget. Currently, admin costs are eight point six percent of the fiscal budget. By reducing costs to seven percent, we can save over one point seven million. Reduce to six percent and save two point eight million. Just because there were admin cuts last year doesn't mean more aren't needed. Additionally, admin keeps saying their budget increased because of COVID money and the classification of positions. Then an audit needs to be done and shared publicly about how these funds are going to student-facing positions. The school board can charge admin with providing audit information as well as finding more savings. After all, admin continues to talk about being more fiscally responsible. I urge you to rescind or reconsider Scenario Three at the next meeting. I urge you to resend or reconsider Scenario Three at the next meeting with all members present, and instead do what Mr. Andrews suggested and slow down to look more in-depth at each of these scenarios and investigate further these solutions that have the potential to save the school district millions of dollars. Create a committee of community members and board members to work through each scenario and garner community buy-in. What is the best, what is in the best interest for our kids and our school system demands this. Thank you.
The next speaker is Abby Skinner.
Good evening. My name is Abby Skinner, and I am the PTO president of TC Miller Elementary School. I have a third grader there who actually drew that painting that's right behind DePaul's head there. I just realized that tonight, so pretty proud of that. I'm here to address the issue of enrollment in our school system and offer possible solutions. As we know, one of the reasons the school board is weighing the possibility of closing school buildings is due to declining enrollment. While some of the decline can be blamed on demographic shifts we have no control over, in Lynchburg, issues with our educational offerings are a large contributing factor. Across the country, nine percent of families choose private education over public. In Lynchburg, it's thirty-three percent. Instead of accepting the local exodus from public schools, why don't we address it? How can we bring families back to LCS or prevent others from leaving? First, we can stop capping enrollment at TC Miller, Desi, and Dunbar. This year, twenty-eight students sat on TC Miller's waitlist, and last year, thirty-one were turned away. TCM's current enrollment is one ninety-one, but we have the capacity for two hundred and fifty. Why are children turned down? Principals at each of our schools of innovation told us they don't even know why. They don't have a say in the process and aren't sure who does. Dr. Glover, the former assistant principal at Dunbar, told us, "When I was there, the school administration didn't decide how many applicants were taken. That was all done by the central office." Can you all tell us why enrollment in our schools for innovation has declined over the last four years while interest in them is not? Second, we need to highlight our district's strengths. Having schools for innovation is one of them. Across the country, magnet schools have a proven track record of attracting students and families due to their unique and specialized educational offerings. Our schools for innovation focus on specific themes, curricula, and educational approaches that set them apart from traditional public schools. Their diverse populations also make them stand out and foster cultures of acceptance and inclusivity. If we want to keep our local kids in public school and attract new residents to our area, let's reinvest in the schools that make parents choose public over private. Third, let's focus on community outreach. You can't address enrollment challenges in isolation. The joke at TC Miller is that it's Lynchburg's best-kept secret. When I applied for my son to attend, I had to dig around the Lynchburg City School website and then keep checking back for the application. I hear a similar story from most parents. The school system used to advertise for these schools with billboards and commercials and even visited preschools to invite parents to apply. Why did we stop marketing ourselves? Engaging with our parents, local businesses, and organizations is imperative and would max out TCM's two hundred and fifty child capacity in no time. Since your proposal to close TCM and Sandusky went public, several local private schools that I've spoken to have seen an increase in tour requests. Families are already thinking about fleeing, and you are responsible. Please make a motion to rescind Scenario Three in the next meeting when all members are present. And as we've already said, slow down and look more in-depth at each of these scenarios. We're counting on you.
Thanks.
The next on the list is Sonya Langhorn. Is Sonya Langhorn here? No? Out in the lobby, perhaps?
She's not here.
She's not here? All right. Then, uh, next is, um, Latoria Alexander.
I attended the last informal school board meeting. Schools were graded poorly if the student/teacher ratio was low. But what about our children that don't learn this way? Every child won't learn in a twenty-to-one ratio. This is why I have my sign. Some need similar, smaller cases of one-on-one or, let's say, two-to-one. What happened to every child by name, by need, to graduation and beyond? These words mean everything to me, as both my children attend Lynchburg City Schools. My first child, Amani, now attends NSU. The foundation started at Sandusky. There were so many teachers that helped her when she was having a hard time. She still talks about Ms. Roberson and Ms. Allen as if she still goes to school there. I now have my second child, McKinley, at SES. Yes, I love Sandusky so much that they were there twelve years apart, so I'm starting all over. McKinley has been a Spartan since she was born and called the class "Baby." This is why we do it better when we do it together. We are family, and families shouldn't be broken apart. Has the school board considered the negative effect of the closures that will have on our children, not only our children, but the children in the surrounding schools? Children will now just be a number in class, not by name and by need, and that will change the way that things work in our school system. As a parent, I recently went through chemo, and I had to leave my children here so they wouldn't miss school. As a mother, I love the heartfelt messages, the pictures, the extra hugs she received, all the things they let, that was sent through Sandusky to let me know my child was okay. So, as I look at this, every child by name, by need, by graduation and beyond, and families shouldn't be broken, please reconsider.
Uh, next is Tiersha Royal.
Good evening. I am Tiersha Royal, president of the Sandusky Elementary PTO. We are here today to respond to plan for closure of Sandusky Elementary School. This closure would have lasting effects on our community, and as such, we respectfully request that you attend the town hall meeting hosted by Vice Mayor Chris Feraldi on Tuesday, October seventeenth at six-thirty PM at Sandusky to have a conversation with the people most affected by this decision. The decision to close Sandusky and TC Miller was made without proper planning or consideration. Although we have paid two different consultants a considerable amount of money to look at our district, there is still no concrete plan in place. Just as our children are getting their security and stability back after being out of school full-time for eighteen months due to COVID, you have now thrown almost sixteen, six hundred kids back into uncertainty with this decision. It has been said several times that the closure of Sandusky is just about a building. Sandusky is more than just a building. It always has been. Our kids don't need state-of-the-art technology or a fancy auditorium to learn. Would those things be nice? Of course. But are they worth the cost of closing an excellent, excellent elementary school with teachers who help our children learn and grow? No. It simply is not. We ask that you go back to the drawing board and find a solution that has a realistic, concrete plan behind it so that our kids, parents, teachers, and community can move forward in confidence. I would ask that you please make a motion to reconsider Scenario Three. Thank you.
Next is Joanna Darenbacher.
Hello. My name is Joanna Darenbacher. I have been an LCS parent for ten years and have two daughters, one at Heritage High School who literally ten minutes ago just won her first JV volleyball game, and my other daughter, Sophie, who's at Sandusky Middle School, and she's with me here tonight. When my oldest daughter was in preschool, I encountered surprise from other parents when they learned that we were sending her to LCS. The prevailing sentiment was that LCS wasn't the first choice for many in our community. I must say their decision has resulted in primarily positive experiences. The dedication of the teachers and staff have played crucial roles in fostering our children's growth and development. We are genuinely grateful for the decision that we made. However, tonight, I would like to express my concern and dismay at the proposal to close Sandusky and TC Miller. The decision to close without a clear plan for displaced students is a matter of grave concern to me. The transition for these students will be daunting and disruptive experience, and is our responsibility to ensure that they are provided with a well-thought-out transition. I've been a nurse for eighteen years in our community. I'm extremely worried that without a clear plan in place, students and their families may experience heightened stress and uncertainty. Adverse experiences at home and school impair normal development of the brain and the nervous system, which can cause impaired learning and difficulties with emotional self-regulation that can last into adulthood. Closing a school without a plan in place for the affected students is akin to leaving them adrift in uncertainty. Research consistently shows that school closures can lead to heightened levels of stress, anxiety, and emotional turmoil among students. They are suddenly faced with the loss of their support system, their friends, and the comforting routine that school provides. Moreover, children who face challenges at home are disproportionately affected by these disruptions. To address this concern, I request the following actions. Develop a comprehensive transition plan. It's imperative that we have this plan in place that outlines where the affected students will be transferred, including details about transportation, school resources, and any additional support services. I really feel like this should have been outlined before decision was made. Prioritize student well-being. The emotional and physiological, or sorry, psychological well-being of our students is a top priority. Consider the cost of implementing additional counseling services and support programs to help students cope with transition and any associated stress. Engage the LCS community. Gather input and feedback regarding the transition plan. While you did this with a survey that you sent in July, it did not include any transitional plans. Involving the community in the creation of this plan is invaluable. Ensure educational continuity. Make sure that schools are receiving, that the receiving schools have the resources and capacity to take on these new students. And so I ask for you to make a motion to rescind Scenario Three and take the time to thoroughly look at your plans. I urge you to consider the long-term consequences of closing schools without a plan. The trauma our children may experience and the detrimental effects on our community cannot be overlooked. While difficult decisions are sometimes necessary, it is equally important to demonstrate our commitment to the well-being and the education of our children. Thank you.
Next is Micah DeVries.
Good evening. My name is Micah, and I'm a mom of two kids who go to TC Miller. My children are thriving there, but I've been hearing one reason after another from members of this board about why their school needs to close and why they need to go to Bass. The building's a liability, there's no auditorium, the school is too small. First of all, there's no such thing as a school that's too small, only a school that's too big. But even so, why was TCM put on a waitlist freeze? We have a line of families that are trying to get their kids enrolled there. Maybe it's because TCM has something to offer in LCS, even if the chairs of the auditorium are not bolted to the floor. Dominion Seven says we need to modernize our buildings, that we have too many elementary schools too small to, quote, "provide a quality educational environment." What does Dominion Seven know about what constitutes a quality educational environment? Nothing. They're an architectural firm. Don't go to an architect to get opinions on education. What they can tell you, and what they did tell you, is that TCM is built like a tank and that it's in the top five facilities for elementary schools. Yes, our building is old, but clearly this doesn't present a problem, as the Board is considering repurposing it as a pre-K facility. You've told us the School of Innovation isn't going anywhere. The plan is to expand Bass to fit TCM. With what? The fifteen million you don't have yet? And what if city council decides not to give you that fifteen million? How can you promise us that the School of Innovation is here to stay when you don't yet have the finances to back that kind of promise? If you don't get the funds for renovations at Bass, will you simply stuff like sardines almost six hundred students into the remaining schools? In closing Sandusky, you will already have to relocate over three hundred students into its three closest schools, all of which are the most highly utilized elementary schools in the city. So much for small classrooms. The Board's choice of Scenario Three will increase total classroom utilization from around eighty-three percent to ninety percent or higher, which is not good for students. MGT stated in their analysis that any school above ninety percent utilization will feel crowded and will be limited in flow, process, and procedure. Ideal utilization, according to MGT, is eighty-five percent, which is very close to where we are now. Members of this Board have claimed that this has been an in-depth conversation. When Scenario was put forth by the Finance and Facilities Committee, it was discussed by this Board for a total of forty minutes before the vote took place. Dominion Seven and Dr. Days oversimplified, oversimplified the complex problem into a simple algorithm, ignoring, ignoring critical aspects like community impact and diversity. The Board's failure to consider these factors is highly troubling to our community. In closing, TCM keeps families within LCS. Closing this school will not help the declining enrollment problem, but will actually cause more families to leave LCS for good. Anyone who has actually walked the halls of our schools knows how special these schools are to our community and how absurd this solution is. We ask the school board to make a motion to rescind their vote on Scenario Three and take more time to learn all the information before making such a pivotal decision to close two vital schools to our community. Thank you.
Hello again. My name is Beth Brown. I'm a second-grade teacher at TC Miller Elementary School, and I have a first grader that also goes to TC Miller with me. I urge you to say to rescind or reconsider Scenario Three. To cut right to the chase, in previous emails and speeches, I have discussed mostly the students and my personal children. This time, we're going to talk about the adults. This decision is putting the leaders in a, the teachers, in a very difficult position. How are we, in good faith, going to continue working for a school division that does not appreciate the very soul of our career path? Lynchburg City Schools is going to lose decades of valuable experience in the educational field. They are going to lose the passion that drives the teachers to bring success and love to our students. They are going to lose the professional ability to handle students with trauma, economically disadvantaged students, students with little to no support at home. The student will, the city will lose the valued members of our community that have been able to lead students to greatness. Closing these schools is going to push some of your greatest educators to leave the division. The division had many open positions this year on the first day of school. This will continue if teachers are not valued, appreciated, and considered when it comes to big decisions like closing down our second homes. Due to the importance of this matter, I'm sure you have inundated yourself with the immense amounts of data and concerns that our Save the Schools groups have sent to you, as well as your own personal research. I can't imagine you'd feel comfortable making this big of a decision without knowing every single detail. These concerns include, but are not limited to, class sizes, behavior problems, overpopulation, diversity issues, and many, many more. Until these concerns are taken into consideration and well-planned for, we cannot close these schools. The numbers don't make sense, the money doesn't make sense, the job situation doesn't make sense. Very little of this plan makes sense. Please look into these concerns with the intensity that you would if your children also attended these schools.
Next is Lynn Forth.
To the school board, please make a motion to rescind the vote on Scenario Three until all board members are present. Much of the data you are basing your analysis on came from Dominion Seven, an architecture firm, not an education firm. According to Mr. Blair Smith from Dominion Seven, the average elementary school size in the Commonwealth is eight hundred students. Their company and study prioritizes utilization. While ignoring vital programs like special education, Mr. Blair simply stated that high utilization was the cost of doing business. A popular item that keeps being discussed is declining enrollment. As a school, it is part of your duties to find ways to increase enrollment. Instead, we're here discussing your vote to close two schools, one of which is a school for innovation. Closing schools isn't innovative. You're reinforcing to the public, parents, and students that our local public school system doesn't matter, is not worth improving, and can't compete with Lynchburg's private schools. You should want LCS to compete, since you were elected to ensure that our students would have the best education possible. It's part of your strategic plan, after all. Don't wait for parents to lose trust in the city school system to switch their kids to private schools. You're willing to ask city council for fifteen million dollars to add classrooms to an existing elementary school. Why aren't you willing to ask money for, to invest in making improvements to schools where students are thriving, like TC Miller and Sandusky? students are thriving, like TC Miller and Sandusky? Countless research has proven that smaller class sizes create thriving learning environments. Do you know why you have declining enrollment? Because parents who can afford it are sending their kids to private schools, where they'll find smaller classrooms with more individualized attention. All along, you've been saying that everything will stay the same. These special programs and students will just move to Bass. How do you foresee this happening when your biggest push has been for close-to-home rezoning? If close-to-home rezoning is the backbone of these master plans, my son will not simply move to Bass, but will have to go to Perrymont. And if you're closing Sandusky, many of those students will also go to Perrymont, a school that currently only has eighty-eight empty seats. Tell me, how do you propose to fit all those students in the remaining elementary schools without causing overcrowding? It's also worth noting that Perrymont is number five on the list of buildings with failing conditions, according to the Dominion Seven report. Making this rash decision by voting for Scenario Three and choosing close-to-home rezoning, you're jeopardizing and impacting almost six hundred students' futures. Students who attend TC Miller are able to take advantage of special programs regardless of their parents' socioeconomic status. You've said that these programs will just move to Bass, but not every student will move with them. And just like that, you've removed access to programs like Stream, a theater program, and Advanced Art from the students who most desperately need them. If the essence of a school cannot be tied to a building, what would our government be without the Capitol? What would the presidency mean without the White House? The essence of a school is the unique combination of students, teachers, and the environment they exist in. So, no, a school can't just be picked up, students randomly moved elsewhere, and be expected to remain the same. When facing a big decision, often the only impact that's considered is the cost of doing business. Ask yourselves this: What about the human cost? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nicole Spengenberg.
Good afternoon, school board and community. My name is Nicole Spengenberg. I'll keep this brief out of respect for all of these community members here to speak for our schools, which will continue being an important topic in the months to come. School Board has a variety of projects and responsibilities at the same time, some happening much more quietly than others. So I'm here to speak for a different group of students in our community, as a social worker and as a gay community member, regarding the ten thousand dollar grant that has been awarded to EC Glass from the It Gets Better Project to support LGBTQ+ students in our community. It is my understanding that the school board is discussing whether or not to approve the school accepting this grant, and I'm here to encourage you to approve the use of this grant. They were one of only fifty schools in the U.S. and Canada to win the grant, which is a great accomplishment. They won the grant because they expressed that they have unmet needs in their school and in their community. Otherwise, they wouldn't have been chosen for this grant. This is such a wonderful opportunity to meet the students' needs and reward them for all of their hard work. I want to congratulate all of those students and staff that worked hard throughout the grant application process and those working through each stage of the grant acceptance and planning process now. From what I've learned, the students hope and plan to use the funds to support a GSA, a student-led organization to support LGBTQ+ students, to create a safe space, inclusive calming room, and to purchase inclusive books representing the LGBTQ+ community. Student-led organizations give great leadership opportunities that will help students now and down the road. A club that's student-led, that provides a safe, affirming space, and a more welcoming climate is life-changing. Only fifteen percent of LGBTQ+ students say that they're taught positive representations of their community in school, including people, history, or events. So it's very exciting that there could be new inclusive curriculum coming to Glass. The grant requests stood out to the It Gets Better Project because the students and everyone else working on applying focused not only on the school, but the Lynchburg community at large. Students voiced that they need more support in school and in the community, and if they had sufficient support and needs met, they wouldn't have caught the eye of this national organization that saw them as needing ten thousand dollars of support. So I urge you to support and accept and encourage this group to accept the grant opportunity, to take the students' lead on what is needed, and to see all students by name and need. Thank you so much to all of those students taking the initiative to make your community a brighter space.
Thank you. Next is Kimberly Dyke Carsley. Harzly? I'm sorry, I can't quite read the handwriting.
Okay. Kimberly Dyke Harzly, here to share some concerns, ideas, suggestions. Congress defines neighborhood schools as nearest the student's place of residence. I'm one who encourages rezoning. Darrington is a neighborhood school. If you do the asset mapping of the area, where seven out of ten enrolled live in the area, everything that is needed is within walking distance of one half to one mile. I've listed that before in previous comments. Perhaps turmoil already exists because public participation at school board meetings doesn't get any feedback. I don't know if I'm heard. I know I'm seen because I see you, but maybe that rule needs to be changed, that some type of acknowledgement or recognition of the public participation exists. And speaking of renovations, looks like this room is too small, too. I'm looking at, in my head, my grandmother, was my maternal grandmother, a great seamstress and quilt maker, and her pieces were even. I could pick out what went where. Now, look at this picture over here. Kind of reminds me of the redlining map. Not of minorities, but of the global majority who were affected. See, minority is a demeaning term for the record. Some area wasn't dare mentioned in any conversation. We all know what areas they were. Wouldn't dare mention closing those schools. I recall swiping my student card on the GLTC bus for free. Maybe go back to those swiping the student IDs. Hopefully, William Marvin Bass does get that fifteen million or more. That side of town hasn't been invested in in quite a long time. My great-grandfather stood on that ground. It was Morgan State College, I believe, and he gave the valedictorian address in six different languages. Shout out to William Robert Dyke, Sr. Justice Scalia stated constitutional right doesn't mean equal racial population, it just means equal access. Diversity can be defined by many different factors, not just race classifications, because the complaint isn't always that. I haven't heard that complaint from those who are classified as minority. Have you?
Thank you. And I think we're down to our last speaker, Vicente Gonzalez.
I'm speaking for a group. I'm speaking for a group?
Yes.
Oh, just because it says three minutes?
What's the name of the group?
Yeah. What's the name of your group?
Queer Town Hall.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Vicente Gonzalez, and I'm here representing the Lynchburg Queer Town Hall. I'm queer and non-binary and a graduate of EC Glass High School. First, I would like to say that the Queer Town Hall stands in full support of our LCS community amid the confusion and chaos of the current school closings. There is a lot to say about this issue, but for now, we'll simply acknowledge what we are up against. Schools are closing. The school budget has been significantly cut by a far-right city council. There are significant attempts to ban books and remove diversity initiatives from the classroom. In order to confront these challenges, we need to build coalitions. When we defend and support each other, we can build something that is strong and long-lasting. We must organize and develop alliances that cross cultural, political, and socioeconomic boundaries. I am here today to highlight and celebrate the EC Glass High School Gender and Sexuality Alliance on being awarded a ten thousand dollar grant by the National LGBTQ Organization that It Gets Better Campaign. This grant is being used by students all over the country to support school-based projects based on local needs, varying from creating queer youth conferences to developing trainings for educators and administrators, and even creating LGBTQ history classes. This grant is giving students the opportunity to imagine a world where they are included, celebrated, and loved. We are so moved and proud of the students at EC Glass for being the chosen winners from the state of Virginia for this highly competitive grant. This is nothing short of a huge accomplishment, and the Lynchburg City School System should be thrilled. I think it's important to take this moment to not only celebrate our students, but also take a look at ourselves. Why is it that students are looking for outside sources of support when it comes to queer and LGBTQ allyship? Where is the underlying lack of support from the administration and school board when it comes to providing safe learning environments for queer, LGBTQ, and transgender students? Students are tuning in and digesting the anti-queer messages being pushed by city council members and other leading figures in our community. We are living in a political moment where queer and transgender people are being attacked and scapegoated. These conditions are resulting in queer and trans students being harassed and bullied in their schools, homes, and community. Harassment, bullying, and isolation is resulting in queer youth being significantly more likely to experience depression, substance abuse, homelessness, and attempted suicide. According to the CDC, fourteen percent of queer youth did not go to school for safety concerns, in contrast to seven percent of their heterosexual and cisgender peers. The same study found that twenty-two percent of queer youth experienced sexual violence versus eight percent of hetero and cis students. In Virginia, thirty-four percent of students reported experiencing threat or harm because of their sexuality or gender identity. Seventy percent experienced discrimination. According to the 2022 National Survey of LGBTQ Mental Health, fifty-eight percent of youth surveyed reported experiencing depression. Fifty percent of queer youth surveyed between ages of thirteen and seventeen considered suicide. Eighteen percent attempted. In the state of Virginia, forty-three percent of queer youth reported considering suicide, while thirteen percent attempted. These rates increased for Black and Indigenous queer youth. This grant is not simply providing support, but providing lifesaving support. So I ask you, are you willing to stand in the way of a student's access to lifesaving support? I truly hope that the school board, the LCS administration, and the administration of EC Glass will do nothing less than provide their full support to these students. This is not simply an issue of queer liberation, but also an issue of equal access to public education. If queer and trans students do not have equal access to bathrooms, extracurricular activities, and safe academic learning environments, then they do not have equal access to public schools.
Thank you for letting us speak. Hey, that concludes the list of all the speakers who signed up to speak. I believe we have one voicemail comment. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You're going to play it for us?
I just wanted to leave a voicemail for my comment. I'm not sure if this is the place to do that, or if that's another number. Just in case, I'll go ahead and put it here. I hope that's not inconvenient for you, but I appreciate it. My name's Kellen Knight, and I wanted to congratulate the students heading the GSA at EC Glass. They received a ten thousand dollar grant. They are one of fifty schools in the state and the only school in Virginia to receive this grant from the It Gets Better Campaign. Justin, Tim, uh, Tinball? Um, campaign stated that one of the reasons their application stood out was that they not only wanted to better their school, but also wanted to reach out into the community in Lynchburg, which I think is a really amazing example of great citizenship. I also know that the adults have been working for a while and talking for a while about creating a better community for the LGBTQ+ community in our schools, and that's been slow-going. So I hope that the students are proud, and it's very admirable that they were able to advocate for what they need and attain that. I also think it's important, we reflect that that's what it took, that the students were so in need, and the adults weren't there to step up. I also understand that there's been some pushback to them receiving this grant and whether or not it should be accepted. One of the proponents of this, Alex Nestor, stated it's because adults are pushing politics on children, which shows a misunderstanding of how the grant works. So they applied for it with a plan for the money. Actually, they have a wonderful outline for how they'll spend the money that they earned. So I look forward to seeing where they go with this. Create a safe place in their school, because every kid deserves to go to school and feel safe. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the public comment period.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Finance report, Dr. Edwards.
I am going to turn it over to Dr. Waterka.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. First, I'd like to introduce Mr. Chris Sorenson, who is across the way, who will, assuming that the board approves a consent agenda, will be serving as our interim chief financial officer in lieu of the prior individual that was in the position. So he'll be with us for several months, hopefully, until we get a CFO, full-time CFO, or January, I think, whichever is there. So, welcome to him. And I will complete the summary of the board report for this month and then next month. Mr. Sorenson will be up to speed and be ready. This is his second day. So I will start on the board report, just the cover sheet that we have here, as we always do, and on the revenues that we received to date. You'll note that we are at nineteen point one eight percent, as opposed to twenty point nine three percent last year. That variation is reflected as a result of largely the city reserve that, or the reserve that city council put into place this year. So it is shown as a revenue. Of course, it is not revenue that's available to us, but there is that difference in that number as we go forward. So I just want you to know that. On the expenditure side of things, we're at twenty-two point oh six percent compared to nineteen point three eight percent last year. Much of that sort of larger percentage has to do with the end-of-year expenditures that we had last year that were actually spent during this year. And once the auditors release that, we will convert that back to last year's funds. So that will change over time, over the next couple of months. You'll see the expenditure encumbrances there. We have, as you can see, we've simply just encumbered more money this year. That gives us a better sense of where we'll be earlier in the year, so that we can make adjustments as we need to. Last year, you will remember that we sort of hit the end of the year, made some adjustments sort of at the very end. Hopefully, we'll be able to make adjustments a little bit earlier this year. That gives us a better idea of where we're going to be. The reserves, as you'll see listed, they are as not changed last month. And the next three items are related to health insurance. And the first is this year, as of September 2023. For year-to-date total, we have received receipts, that's the premiums that we paid, two million, six hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, and disbursements have been three million for a deficit at this point of three hundred and forty-two thousand. If you compare that to last year, we were at a deficit of one point four million dollars. So we have received about six hundred thousand dollars more this year in receipts and expended about four hundred thousand dollars less than we did last year. Remember, we also have a rate increase that comes in January, so I think we're headed in the right direction, and it's a good trend as well. So certainly would take any questions that you may have about the financial report, and then we'll, if you don't, then we'll move to the grants fund.
Questions for Dr. Waterka.
This was the, this is the monthly you were looking at, correct?
This is the monthly, yes. This is the monthly, yes.
Where do we stand on budget? I know it's month of October now, so are we collecting information from principals to?
We are, yes, sir. So we have submitted to principals budget instructions and given them the opportunity to see their budget sheets, and they're working through that. The other thing, that's for next year's budget, but remember, we also will have to revise this year's budget once the VDOE Calc tool is available, and it's just not available yet.
Have they given a date when the calc tool?
I think so, haven't. Okay, on the CARES funding report, there's a, this is a quarterly report that we will provide to you, and I want to just highlight a couple of things on that item. On page two, number six, that is our SR2 funds, those are the secondary funds. Those funds technically expire September 30th, but they have to be expended before November 15th. That's a little bit complicated, but they have to be encumbered by September 30th, but spent by September 15th. We're at 82.76% of those monies spent. Encumbrances that will be spent by November 15th are right at 100%. So we're not leaving any money on the table, so we have ensured that we are spending those funds. On number seven, we are, that is SR3, or CARES3, that is a fund, those are funds that are due to be spent by September 30th of next year. So you'll see of encumbrances and all the other items that we've spent, we're at a little over 71%. Again, we do have a plan to have those spent. Some of that will be dependent upon the results of the calc tool. We would like to, if we can, move as many of the positions out of CARES as we can that are in CARES. Again, we need that information from the VDOE calc tool to be able to know how many positions we can do with that. And from that information, we'll be able to use that to reallocate those funds as appropriate. And again, those funds must be spent by September of 2024. And then just one more item I'll note, number 10, it's on page three. This shows 3.26% spent, and has to be spent by December 31st of 2024. This is the Dunbar Middle School Heating Project that the school board approved in August and city council approved in September, and so we are in design right now, and that will be spent well in advance of the deadline. So certainly would take any questions you have on these items.
I have a question. On number 11, what is unfinished learning?
Sure. That was a separate grant that was addressing unfinished learning that's coming from, out of the pandemic. So it really is, again, summer programs, there was a piece of that, before and after school was a piece of it, but addressing unfinished learning was around tutoring and mentoring and achievement gap, that type of thing.
Thank you.
I have a couple brief questions. On item number four, it says the current status is 69.44% spent, and then it says LCS portion. Is 69.44 the full LCS portion?
So that we, as I recall, that was money that was, that expired last year, a year ago. As I recall, that money, we were able to expend about 70% of the LCS portion. There was also, I think, some private school funds in this.
Okay.
So there are, there were funds that were not expended, and we've adjusted to address that.
Okay. And then on item eight, it talks about adaptive playground equipment pending, and I just, what is adaptive playground equipment?
This is playground that's specifically designed for students with special needs, also special ed students.
I get it.
So those items have been ordered, and they're just, they're on the.
Okay, very good. That's all my questions on this. Thank you.
Other questions? Dr. Waterka, I have a question. Item number seven, and I've been asking it for a long time. We've got $28 million sitting there to patch up the learning loss. We have used about 30% of it, expires in less than 11 months now. Do we have a plan in place to use that money?
So remember, some of that money, a fair amount of that money is dedicated to staff that are being paid for with these funds. So a significant amount of that money will be paid, and hopefully, as little as we possibly can, because we'll be able to move them into the operating budget before it's time. A colleague maybe could talk a little bit more about learning loss.
I do, and we have allocated, as we've spoken to the board before, we have allocated funds in curriculum and instruction, as well as student services, as well as information technology. So those funds have been allocated to different departments, but because we have moved some of the staffing into SR3, we want to make sure that we're not overspending on the things that we've put in place or identified for achievement gap, curriculum instruction, those types of things, mental health support, behavioral support. So as Dr. Waterka said, when the state releases their calc tool, then we'll be able to better calculate how much we have left outside of staffing to allocate.
We have moved staffing, these funds for hiring permanent staff or temporary staff?
So for the CARES, so for CARES funds, there are positions that have been, what we probably, most people think about as permanent staff, potentially in those funds, in those CARES3 funds, so.
So for example, as we increased the behavioral support, behavioral coaches, we were paying for that with CARES funding. There were some other positions as well.
Would you be able to present to this board that mental health grant Dr. Brown got last year? Where do we stand on that? Because I'm particularly interested in that increase in stipend we were giving to our employees, you know? So.
We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
I know that Dr. Brown is going to attend, I believe, in just a few weeks. There are accountability checks and meetings, and he's attending a full-day meeting on the school-based mental health grant to talk about data and expenditures. So I will, we'll bring that to the board.
Thank you. Any other questions? Dr. Carter, you were saying? Need a break?
You need a break.
All right, before we move to the next item, how about we take five minutes?
Are there two more items on the finance?
You want, do you have more?
So we don't usually go through the detail reports, but certainly happy to answer any questions.
I didn't have any questions. I just didn't want you to be cut off.
So is that okay if we take a five-minute break?
Please.
We'll come back to the consent agenda. Thank you.
Back in session?
Maybe you could show me the line.
Yeah, yeah.
We did get more money for, I mean, we did get more money this year.
Did you get more?
Back in session?
Oh, okay.
Quiet, please.
It's at the bottom. It's the one, two, third, fourth, what's on the bottom.
I need to get a bill.
Back in session. The next item is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A move that we approve the consent agenda.
Dr. Carter, Mr. Andrews seconded the motion. Any discussion on consent agenda? Any item you want pulled up? Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Giglio?
I'm staying.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Question carries.
Thank you. Next one is comprehensive strategic plan, facilities master plan follow-up.
Dr. Ed.
So under the facilities master plan is where we have our discussion about scenario three and the additional $15 million for the BASS. What we want to do tonight, with the exception of just probably the first question, is not make any motions or any major decisions, but the way that we have structured this, and I've sent the questions to school board members in advance, is so that we can have thoughtful discussion tonight. And then for those of us who need a little bit more time for things to mull around in our heads before we make a decision, we can come back to our work session in two weeks to really get to more thoughtful decisions if we're ready at that time. So there is no need to really push through, but rather to talk about a lot of the things that are presented here. Many of them are questions that will help guide the work that we would need to do moving forward. I will also just talk more about process in understanding that the work that we do here, a rezoning plan, close-to-home plan, programmatic plan, talent, all of that will ultimately come back to the school board, come back to the publics. This most immediate part is regarding just formalizing direction. There will be another opportunity for a public hearing, I believe, sometime in January, and then, of course, another vote to firm up and finalize any directions that we have for, that will impact next school year. So again, just want to lay the foundation that we all want to make very thoughtful decisions, and also tease out pros and cons, things we may not have seen, so that we make sure as we follow the direction that the board wants to go. One, that we understand that direction, and two, that we're all going accordingly. So Dr. Edwards, I am Dr. Edwards. Dr. Waterka has put together a PowerPoint that has what we call the five critical questions. And we want to call this a facilitated discussion and not a presentation, because there's just no way we can do this in 15 minutes. And we really want to engage the board in a discussion with us and in a discussion with each other just about some of these items here. So we have a lot of information presented in the PowerPoint, on the, there's a spreadsheet as well. And again, even for the public listening, this is our opportunity to do a little digging deep and being thoughtful and mindful. It also gives the public an opportunity to look at the questions that we have, the things that we're thinking about as we're moving forward, so that when we do come back and reengage with the public, they'll understand this process. So I think I've heated up pretty well, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Waterka, and Mrs. Pugh and myself will kind of tag-team along with him as needed.
Well, thank you, Dr. Edwards, and good evening again. As Dr. Edwards said, we hope to have a guided discussion this evening, just about some of these particular critical questions that we have. As Dr. Edwards said, this really will help us guide the implementation plan and the development of the implementation plan. And I'll just add to what she said, in that we want to make sure that there's not something that we're leaving to sort of our interpretation, any questions that are there. And so I want to make sure that we are all on the same page, working in the same direction, and understanding what the intent of the board is and where we're going, so that as we continue to develop an implementation plan that we are working, again, on the same, in the same direction. So I'll start just with the next slide, just a little bit of cross-tracking here, and just a little bit of history. And throughout this presentation or this conversation, there's a little bit of context that we'll provide, as well as we'll sort of take stops for discussion that you may have. We're also going to ask you through time what specific information that you might need as we go forward to make decisions on these particular questions. We understand that scenario three seems to be the direction we're going, but again, there are some nuanced questions. And we want to make sure, if you have specific pieces of information that you need, that we can have time to provide that to you and have a good discussion about that. So we just want to make sure, again, we're working in the same direction. So on the left side of the screen, you have here the Dominion Seven recommendations. Those came from 2022, where there were three sort of major options. The first was operational efficiency, that would be, that we construct much larger schools, do consolidate those other schools into those larger schools, have attendance zones, and repurpose some of those schools. None of those sort of, that option didn't translate in really into any of the new options that came forward with MGT, right? Because that would require the construction of several large, new elementary schools. We just didn't think that was going to be a feasible solution. The second one is the middle ground, so consolidate maybe some schools, build maybe one new school, repurpose some schools, make those attendance zones, zone adjustments. And that really reflects into scenario one that came through MGT. And the last is option three, which is sort of financially the ones that are a little bit easier to do, but we had a number of options that are there. We're focusing sort of on existing facilities, making sure that we're taking care of what we have. We might have fewer schools. Of course, that would be different than option one, but no new schools. Of course, that would be different than option one, but no new schools. And really, again, focusing on maintaining the schools. And so really, scenarios two, three, and four really reflect on that, and that's based on the guidance we received from the school board at the time. And then again, of course, ultimately, as we know, the school board elected to choose scenario three as we go forward. Okay, the next slide. So this is just a reflection of what the actions were in scenario three. So there were the primary components, right, that we have the graphic on the side. That's rezoning for close to home, close and convert TC Miller, close Sandusky Elementary, expand several elementary schools, renovate others, and do other elementary school improvements. But there also are these core actions that are a part of what the MGT's recommendation are, that that be a core action of anything that we do, right? And there's components to that that we just have to have some conversation around, right? So again, of course, close to home zoning, improving those elementary buildings, expanding pre-K options, expanding CTE options, and of course, removing portable classrooms. And we just want to know, and we want to have a conversation with you about what precisely did the board intend when you voted on scenario three? And what components of that, if any, that might be different from your understanding of what you voted on, to ensure that we're doing the same thing. So go to the next slide, and the first question is around phasing of these components. There's lots of things that are here, and we reviewed the board meeting on September 19th, and we think what we've done is categorized on the next slide where we think those, each one of those items fits, right? So phase one, which will be in the next year to two years, and then future phases. We want to ask you, and this is the kind of question we want to ask, hopefully you'll answer sort of by consensus tonight, is are these items in the right place, right? So phase one or future phases? And that's very important for us as we continue this conversation. So if you go to the next slide, we have divided them for phase one, for rezoning for close to home, expanding BASS, of course, that was added to scenario three, closing Sandusky, this question about converting or closing TC Miller. We have more conversation about that in the coming slides, removing portable classrooms, and then beginning the development or implementation of the safety and maintenance improvement plan for all the other elementary schools. Phase two would be these, all the other items that you see there that would be done, you know, potentially in the next seven to 10 years or potentially a little bit longer. The question that we have for you is not necessarily, do you want to, for instance, renovate RS Payne? We just want to make sure that as we have defined them in the phasing, as we develop the implementation plan, are these in the right place? And if not, help us understand what needs to be changed. Again, you're not saying that we're definitely going to do all of these things. It's just simply saying, are they, or did we interpret your directions in the right way? And I think that's a first good stopping point, and we'd love to take any perspective that anybody might have on this.
So I have one, I guess it's a question, because we're not making any decisions tonight. We're just getting the issues that we need to address on the table. My question concerns the portable classrooms and whether holding on to them longer than two years would help us in whatever form the transition ultimately takes. Would it help to have those portable classrooms still usable? Would that smooth any aspect of the transition? If it would, then I would say, well, then we ought to hold on to them for longer than two years.
Agreed.
All right, so we can have that, we can answer that question.
Float between.
Yeah. And I'll say, one point is, we, in order to help balance the budget this year, we have already removed some of them.
Okay.
That was, that's the Sheffield. We do have remaining portable classrooms at Bedford Hills and Darrington.
So, go ahead.
The idea of combining safety, maintenance, and improvements all together, I would rather see safety as its own separate issue. If there is a safety concern in any of the schools, that needs to be addressed first.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Sure. And something like that, we could definitely, as we develop the capital plan, that could be definitely something we focus as we structure the financing plan for that, for sure.
So expansion to pre-K or expansion of CTE, will that require fresh cash inflow?
So as we'll get to in the next couple of slides, that depends on what you do. And again, we don't necessarily want to say in this question, do this or not, right? This is, the question is, did we interpret the timing right? But I think depending on what you do, there could be.
One of the, phase one is convert TCM. Conversion was to pre-K, right? So if you convert right now, that conversion will require additional cash on the board.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not asking you whether or not you, on this slide, whether or not you want to convert or to close. All we're asking is, did we get the, right now, let's pay attention to this top row right now, and we'll have lots of discussion on the right now, and then the bottom row is sort of the, these are the longer term. Have we brought them, you know, separated them accordingly? And we can make decisions about all of those, but just, did we do the timing right, is what we're going for.
And, sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So in the next couple of slides, we have that question to ask.
All right.
Okay, and mine was sort of floating between the two. If the TC Miller, if it's closed and we rezone for all the pre-K, the phase for the bottom part, in my mind, my question is, those children, are they, since they pass Perrymont to go to Sandusky Elementary School, would it be, would they, if they're going to end up at Perrymont, are they, is that where they're zoned for? Like, they're zoned for Perrymont, then we should probably, I'm thinking, I would say, like Perrymont would be there, and then, because some of those children live off of Ford Avenue, so they're close, then I would, I was thinking when I was looking at this, would it be possible to Perrymont, and then would Payne make sense more if those other kids are zoned closer to that, than Linkhorn Elementary, I saw we expanded in the parking lot, then Bedford Hills, and then the others.
Sure, it could be, and I think that's why we put in that close to home zoning.
Yes.
First, because I think that's, you know, that's a thing that we need to do pretty quickly if we continue down this path.
Yeah, so that's why I was wondering.
I can't answer that specific question.
Yeah, so based on they're close to home, would the Perrymont element be more important?
That's right.
The ones on the bottom were not in any particular order.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Things on the top, things on the bottom.
Gosh, they're not.
I didn't understand.
We missed that. All right, all right.
So I guess the question is, did we generally get these in the right place? And I think we could say yes or no.
I think yes, but we're not, are we making that decision now, or you want that ultimate?
That one.
Kind of important for now.
That one is important.
I would say yes.
He has a question.
Please remind me what the rezoning for close to home is. Is this for transportation issues, to cut down on transportation costs?
Just two things. So certainly, transportation is one of those things. The other idea is that we want families to be able to engage more fully. So when we have particularly the long distances between neighborhoods that are served and the schools they're in, again, the example we use all the time is some of Florida Avenue and Heritage Elementary School, it's very difficult oftentimes for families to engage that way. So there's, it's a couple of different nuances, but certainly, transportation isn't important.
So they don't come, is what happens.
So maybe in short, it means the attendance zones.
Right.
What area is sort of?
I get that. I'm more, and I know that we're past a lot of the things that brought us to the section one, title one concerns. We've come a long way since then, but I still think that there might, I just have an issue. I think there's a benefit to having more balanced populations, and if we're close to home, it might not be as balanced, is my concern.
Yeah, well, there's, I think there's certainly a tension there between close to home and, I mean, this would fall under equity considerations too, that.
That is something that we're looking at, and that's why we went with close to home, not necessarily the, like, you've heard conversations like neighborhood schools, because we do want to make sure that doing anything does not sort of disrupt the balance in our schools. We want to preserve that, and I think we heard a lot of parents talk about diversity on multiple levels in our schools.
I just see that as doing nothing but disrupting it.
Well, at the same time, I think too, unless kids are going to the same schools their siblings are going to, or, you know, they see each other, their neighborhood, it's, I mean, when I was growing up, that's how it was. I mean, you really weren't, unless it's some, there was no, like, like where I was growing up in Vegas, there was no middle school there, period. So we had to be bused far away. As far as elementary, everybody went to the closest one to them, so, because we all walked to school.
So I don't want to overstep, but I think there, of course, there may be some discussion about individual items, but it seems to me like we've got them sort of in the right place.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I just really don't understand this rezone to close to home. What is our definition of close to home? But the other thing is, you're asking or us to say, this is the direction, when we have an amendment, addendum or discussion for, to look at a rescinding of vote, can we?
There's no such motion active at this point.
It failed.
It failed.
Oh, it failed. Oh, Lord, okay.
Otherwise, we, that would have removed this whole discussion from the agenda.
Okay.
All we're doing is deciding which topics are the first two years, which topics are years of the long term after that. That's all we're deciding here.
Oh, I thought we were going left to right, too.
No, 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 no. They're not in any kind of order.
That's my, that's my graphic design, I apologize.
We thought we had it, but we're good.
So what is close to home, what does that mean?
So when we, if, and the elementary map is back there near the parents, but when you look at our original elementary map, and much of that might have been done in a response to what happened in 1971, and so on, oh, thank you, there you go. If you look at our map, you can see, like, if you look at Heritage, which is sort of the dark pink on the bottom left, you'll see there's a lot of neighborhoods around Heritage, but you'll also see that there's another dark pink way on the other side of town. So when we're talking about close to home zoning, we're trying to really rebalance that in a way, and this is why I said this may affect more than just the school districts that, our school districts, the schools that were mentioned. We're trying to rebalance that so we get a nice balance of diversity in our schools, as well as making it comfortable for families to be able to get back to the schools and participate in school activities, engagements, and things of the like.
If Sandusky Elementary is closed, would it perhaps increase diversity, perhaps increase diversity of Heritage if, in fact, some of those students went to Heritage rather than some of the Greenfield students that currently go to Heritage? I mean, it's, it's going to have to be some balancing to try to make, to make all of that happen, in addition to the fact that if TC Miller is converted or closed, or whatever we want to call it, doesn't that also mean that the students that currently go to Sandusky, or at least some of them, could then go to TC Miller? So, because it's not terribly far away from each other, and so the students, that population of Paramount, used to be Sandusky, and TC Miller could kind of be broken down, and that would, that would preserve both the diversity, but also help the numbers.
And that is the work to be done, and that's why we have to constantly bring those types of things back to you, but not only you all, the community as well, to say, here's a proposal for how this could work, here's maybe another option for how this could work. That's the work that MGT will start to do with us, once we have a direction and know, well, which buildings were we trying to sort of reallocate?
And if I may, we have a slide and a couple of slides.
Yeah, we do, we do.
The process, the analytical process that we'll go through, so certainly.
Yeah.
And also, I was wondering, because of the, and someone mentioned it, but it's been brought to city council, too, the buildings going up by Home Depot, so, and since the city council owns all the land, should we even think about saying, hey, we'd like a new school built because these kids are going to be coming in, so then that we could take these kids and these kids? I mean, do we want to consider, is that something we want to consider? Because if you've got, they said, well, of course, when everybody moves in, not everybody's going to have children, but there are going to be children there. Where are they going to go? And what would they, overpopulate? And if it's in a school like Sandusky that we're going to shut down because it's not safe, then what, you know what I'm saying? Like, I wonder if we should tell, we might need a new building.
So if I can, so I think there's items on the bottom of the second line that are, let's say, renovate and expand, and so I think we would all agree that it wouldn't make sense to go ahead and expand those now.
Yes.
But if they're, but we want to put them in the master plan to say, if you do have increasing enrollment down the road, here is where you could do expansions on these sites. And we've put them in sort of the schools that are sort of in the center of the city, so that they're accessible around. And we'll talk more about that as well.
Okay.
It's a really great point.
There's a lot of building being done by.
We're trying to do is think through not just what's the issue today, but also, how do we set the school division up for success 15 or 20 years from now?
Well, because though, that division will be finished, what, by the end of the year probably, or in the beginning of next year?
At Grays Mill, yeah, probably.
So people will start coming, so, yeah.
Meg, as I recall, I don't remember which report it was in, it might have even been the GIS, Cropper GIS demographic study. There was some discussion of, for instance, when I and my wife were in our childbearing years, it was typical for a young family to have two or three children. But now, that's not so typical anymore. Now we're seeing more and more young couples that are both professionals, and not all of them choose to have children at all. And so there are demographic changes that I think were incorporated into all the planning that affects that, you know? A new housing development with 1,000 new units in 1960 is going to generate a different number of children than a new housing unit with 1,000 units in 2024, 2025. And so I believe there was an effort to take current demographic trends like that into account in making the enrollment projections that we are underlying a lot of what we're doing here.
Well, and a side note to that, there are a lot more immigrants coming into the city, too.
That's true.
They have large fans.
And they're very different in terms of their.
So maybe, so maybe, I.
Yeah, we're kind of off the rails here, aren't we?
I don't want to take that away, but again.
Let me just add one point to that, and then we'll move to next slide. So at my, I sit on a UVA K-12 advisory council, so Weldon Cooper is doing another demographic study of Virginia, but also school division. So we'll get that probably in December.
Oh.
So we'll be able to look at what the projections are and compare it to the previous Weldon Cooper study and the Cropper GIS study and using information.
So I think if we're, if we're okay generally where we are right now, we can maybe move, I think everybody says okay, we can move to the next item. And there are items, you will recall, from the graphic that were not included on that list of phases. So we're going to add two things that we're going to stop and talk about just very briefly, well, maybe not briefly, but we'll talk about it for a few minutes, related to expansion of CTE. Again, we want to make sure we understand what the intent and the desire of the board is. And again, doesn't, don't have to make this decision tonight, but we just want to hear your perspective, as well as get some feedback, and also expanding pre-K. So if we go to the next slide. Do you want to do the expansion? Yeah, okay, this one.
Just a current view of where we are with CTE and opportunities for our students. So currently, for middle school and high school students, there are more than 65 courses that sit under 13 areas of focus. And I didn't list them all there, but they are in our current program of studies. CVCC, as you know, we have had students there for the past two years. They have a CTE academy for our high school students to participate in. Last year, I believe, we had maybe 12 or 13 students participating from both schools. This year, we have 25, and I think we have students that are, again, interested in attending, so that will, the number of students that can participate in that will certainly increase. They have more than 50 courses offered at that CTE academy that are under eight areas of focus. And what is of particular interest is that those eight areas are different from the 13 areas that we offer. So this partnership allows for our students to take courses and focus in different areas of CTE that we're not able to provide. And then for the high school, we also have other opportunities for them to have some experiences at the Governor's School STEM Academy. There will hopefully be a CVCC lab school coming in 2025, which is really much focused on embedded CTE that is there. So that would be a wonderful opportunity for our students. And we're already exploring internships. We've been working with Beacon of Hope and some others to really boost up the opportunity for our students to have internships. And if you'll notice over on the right-hand side, this is part of our programmatic and instructional vision. Currently, Dunbar Middle is a school for. Um, currently Dunbar Middle is a school renovation that focuses around, uh, theater and herpetology as well as communications, um, but looking at a specific focus for all of our middle schools um, that our elementary schools would feed into with some focus areas on CTE. But Linkhorn Middle School, um, would be focused on health and environmental sciences. Again, Dunbar would be arts and global studies, and then the focus at Sandusky Middle School would be engineering and technology. And, and that's a, a heavy CTE component, um, for our students to, to have opportunities.
So I think we wanted to give you just a little bit of sneak peek that we're, we're, we're starting to really think about that programmatic vision. Uh, and, and we wanted to just let you know that that is, we were working on that sort of, sort of at the same time. We're gonna continue to bring that forward to us as well. Um, and then if, on the next slide, the, really the big question that we need you to answer, uh, in the next couple of weeks is, and, and the reason we're asking this is because we've heard different things from different people. And the question is, do we, you know, the expansion, we think, of, of CTE programs is critical to the success and the way that we do the instructional approach. Um, but clarity is really needed on to what the board hoped to, and, and to accomplish, uh, whether that be through construction or curriculum, right? Because there has some, I know there's been some conversation about, should we have a purpose-built CTE school? Perfectly good, uh, thing to do. Uh, but we wanna make sure that we should be thinking about that, or, or we should be thinking about developing programs differently. And I think we sort of have a, a silly one, maybe not silly, but it's, it's, should we build a radiology lab, right? Or should we partner with the health system, with the hospital system to, to build experiential learning opportunities there, right? So that's, uh, we're probably not gonna build a radiology lab, but the, these are the things that just kinda gives you an idea of what we're talking about. So, again, is this, are we talking about a purpose-built CTE pro, uh, building? Or is it about expanding CTE programs? And our question is, uh, that. And what more information would the board need to sort of make that, that decision and give that guidance?
Okay, one, because I'm on the CTE Committee, so, um, one of the things that we've been talking about is probably a little bit both of construction and curriculum, because, um, they expand, they need more rooms. So, and, and other successful CTE programs in other parts of the nation and, and counties, the public, the community has access, and it's hard to get access if everything is in the center. So, for example, um, at Heritage High School, the cosmopolitan area is in the middle, so community people cannot come through the school. So if we could move them from the center, maybe to closer to the doors, so that, and then to make the rooms bigger, because those rooms are so small, people are stepping over each other to get where they need to go. And then also in the culinary there, they need a serving area. So, also, um, and at Glass, they also need a serving area, and they need a seating area. They have a door, but not a door that the public could come through into a seating area. So if that could be opened up, that would be helpful, too. And also the program that they, that we think about adding would be nice if we could get a barbering program, because, um, Heritage has cosmetology, but, um, but barbering is very, especially to the guys, it's becoming a very popular thing, and more guys wanna get into it, but we need a program for that. And they also would need a big room to do that in. Just, doesn't need to be a bunch of them, just one big room to do that in. And then also, um, if we could, and then as far as the radiology, like I said, you know, but that would be a CVC thing, but it would be more of an exploratory on CVC, on the CTE Committee, because there doesn't seem to be a ton of interest in that, so we would, probably if we could just, um, partner with Centra, that would be better. And the last one is that the more accessibility that the community has, if we can build its, these programs so that the community can get to their, these, um, areas, whether it be the automotive, whether it be the cosmetology, or the barbering, or the culinary, to, um, build a relationship with the community, then the, because a lot of, some of the things the community doesn't even know about, but if they have, have easy access without, you know, security-wise getting anything else they shouldn't get into, the more it's, they know, the more support we can get from the community. So.
Great, appreciate it.
Good ideas.
So, um, she just gave, uh, a list of a, a lot of specific types of CTE that were considered.
Ideas of whether they run with them?
Well, and my point, what I was gonna say is, I think what we need is, if there's any additional, whether it's barbering, whether it's welding, whether it's, uh, electrician's training, I think we need to know what are the specific CTE programs that we're talking about, and what are the needs? And you enumerated some of them for the ones that you have, but is, is, is that list exhaustive? Or are there others maybe that the community has, has mentioned, is we need a carpentry program? So I think before we can, th- this is my response to what information do we need? I think we need that information. We need to know what CTE programs we're interested in, either new ones or expansion. And then the other comment I would make is, where we're talking about new construction, that costs money, of course, and that's always an issue. And as soon as we're talking about dollars, and we're competing with all the other, um, issues and functions and operations of the district that also need dollars. And so we, my, my personal, um, response is to not jump too quickly into things that require new construction if there's an alternative.
And that's why we said, leave the CTs where they are, just, we need bigger rooms, that's all. We might have to move it within the school, or just keep it closer doors, but not build anything new, just move it.
And again, we are not looking for the board to decide. We're looking for exactly that. What are you thinking about? And, and when you say construction, that means different things to different folks, because if I said construction or renovate, renovation, some folks might, oh, well, I need the dental lab renovated to have dedicated equipment, not necessarily construction. But as you explained it, you know, that's a little bit more.
Need to new the door for the community to be able to come into, into a seating, seating area.
But you're even talking on existing facilities, not construction, new facilities. So, as we are having this conversation and pull, teasing out these ideas, these are the things that we want to hear from board members, so that we, when we come back, we can really make a thoughtful decision that will guide the work that we're doing.
And cost estimates where they're available are relevant, too.
In a, in a community where recent surveys have mentioned that the biggest or the most popular consideration for employment or career is digital influencer? Are we barking up the wrong tree, thinking that kids are gonna wanna be carpenters and plumbers?
So you, you wanna have a CTE program for digital?
No, I don't. I'm just, I really, really don't. We need our counselors to focus, teachers to focus them to more realistic views as opposed to becoming, when we were growing up, professional ballplayers.
I, I think that that's a decision that the board is gonna be involved in, is which C E T, CTE programs we would want to pursue.
And we could also have Robbie Dooley come in at some point.
You do have a CTE Advisory.
Yes.
Yeah.
That does this work, and we can.
Yeah, so maybe we should ask them if they have any input on this.
Well, I also think, and, and Anthony and I have been involved with Beacon of Hope, because that's part of our job responsibility, so to speak. But they have developed a number of internship types of programs. They consequently have connections with businesses and, and business co- and work opportunities here in the city. And so I think it would be a wise decision to have some conversations with them about, because they've had students work with VectorSpace. They've had students, um, work with Falla Airport. They took some students to Detroit for some kind of information about some scholarship programs that are available. But my point is, they're all similar kinds of things that we're talking about. And if they've already got the connections, and perhaps in, within those connections, we could provide internships for, for some students, there's a way to collaborate all of that together to, to make some of it work.
And to Gloria's point, we, there are internships.
So.
What CTE?
To follow up on that, if any of the people connected with Beacon of Hope or the people you're referring to that you've learned from have ideas about a CTE program that would be important for the particular areas that they're interested in, whether it's aviation, for instance, that's, that would be a relevant piece of information for, uh, what we're talking about here.
CTE programs are good for graduation rates. You know, in our district, it's hundred percent, and RICO is ninety-eight percent. So there's a com- it builds up a camaraderie, whether it's curriculum-based or building-based. It does help students graduate through high school.
And the plumbing and the carpentry are very well-paid jobs, especially since a lot of people aren't going into them. They're, yeah, they're paying every day.
Sue, the, again, this is something that you mulled over and think about it, but, um, each one of these, we kinda thought we may know what you mean, but again, just wanting to be sure that we didn't miss anything, particularly as some of the things that we heard were about constructing new facilities for CTE. And, um, we have, for the last couple of years, been leveraging partnerships and programming for CTE to get more kids CTE opportunities, either through direct curriculum by participating in one of the college programs, or even, I think I sent something to you in my newsletter about what Home Depot is doing at, you know, one of our elementary schools, just bringing in, um, different things like that.
I know you're taking feedback from the school board. How about the other stakeholders? You got teachers, you got.
Oh, we'll get them, too. Yeah, yeah.
You're getting the same feedback.
Well, once we kinda get a direction from you all, then of course, nobody builds a CTE program without talking to their staff and, and parents and, um.
What I was referring to is what does the, um, teachers think? Is do we need to expand CTE or not? Do we need to, you know, the, 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 the stakeholders out there, what do they think? Should we go in this direction, or should we take a slightly, you know what I'm talking about? Is that a viable option at this point?
I think when we did the survey, part of what came out of the survey, when we surveyed teachers and, well, not just teachers, but we surveyed community, was expansion of CTE. That's where we got some of those driving forces from surveys, focus groups, and, and that kinda thing. So, so we're building off of previous survey data, but just refining it a little more. Um, and I will say, all of this that we're planning on doing, we're also planning on doing it, going back into the community, going back into, um, buildings. We showed you the slide of the three middle schools. We can't do that without the assistance of the three middle schools and their staff, so.
I do have a question about the three bubbles, the middle schools. So let's say I'm at Dunbar, but I wanna check out the technology at the other school. Do the kids have that? Like, that the high schools, they can go back and forth? Will the middle schools have that, or no?
Yeah, we haven't refined it yet. We are looking at some level of choice, so that, um, kids can have options. Students can go back and forth between high schools, because we can make it work with transportation right now, and, and scheduling is very similar. So as we build a program, those are things that we have to consider.
For bubbles, I was thinking, you missed, you left the business completely. It's technologies there, the arts is there, communication and business, uh, you know?
Yes, it's, it's, just, just wait till you see what we have.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's in there, yeah, for sure. It may not be listed, but it's in there, yeah, for sure.
Okay, good.
All right, Ricky.
Okay. So, all right, so just to summarize, some additional information that you'd like to see, uh, what are the programs that we know we need to have? And we, we can give some of the preliminary information that we know. Um, maybe some, some very preliminary cost estimates, and just kinda get some ideas. Um, and then, and then we also think, we, we just need to make sure we communicate to the board the programs we already have, just a listing, because I'm, I'm not sure that we've necessarily told all of that information just yet, so I think we will do that.
And probably partners that we're already.
Oh, partners that we already have.
We're already, exactly.
Okay. All right, so we'll go to the next one, and that is expansion of pre-K. And the, the question is, um, what, what does that mean? And we just wanna provide, uh, an option of what, a potential option of a conversion at TC Miller might look like. Again, we're not advocating for this, but we just wanna make sure that is something that, uh, you know what that would look like as well. Um, so, our, our thought process is a, a couple of different ways, if you wanted to do that. Um, so in addition to Hutcheson, there's ten pre-K classrooms in the Division that are, that are housed in elementary buildings. Three at RS Payne, three at Paramount, three, uh, four at Paul Monroe. Um, and TC Miller has about fourteen classrooms that are available. Um, so potentially, uh, this is just, again, an, an option, uh, converting TC Miller to all pre-K would add, uh, potentially four additional pre-K spaces. That would give us about sixty additional spots that also free up about two hundred places, uh, opportunities for enrollment in the RS Payne, Paramount, and Paul Monroe zones as well, so that you're sort of freeing up additional space and, and K-five classrooms. So, um, if you go to the next slide, that, that just gives you some context. So our big question here is, does the board want to convert TC Miller to a pre-K site? And if so, should we consider, consider expanding the number of pre-K classrooms, right? So that would not, that would be not taking those classrooms from those elementaries, because that'd be just literally adding more classrooms, right? That, that is, uh, certainly, that would add an additional, uh, hundred ninety-eight seats potentially to, uh, to address the two-hundred-plus waiting list. Of course, that is more costly, because you would be adding teachers in the future, right? The alternative, as I just went through, uh, potentially could be that we move existing pre-K classrooms in the elementary schools at TC Miller, that would open other, uh, open additional capacity in other, other elementary schools. Uh, some pros to that are, um, again, small expansions and additional space. Uh, you could have potentially more, about sixty more pre-K students. Uh, you would have also more space in, in, uh, the elementary schools. Uh, majority of savings would be in place. I can explain that if that doesn't make sense. Uh, but of course, the utility and maintenance costs, as well as some support staff position, cost would be added in this scenario. Um, so, uh, again, that's a big question. Um, certainly, again, don't expect you to make that decision tonight, um, but love to hear from you about what additional information that you might need.
Is there a problem including pre-K in the close to home? They go to the same elementary school?
Yeah, so, in, in that scenario, I mean, you could do that if, and I guess you mean that we would have pre-K in every elementary?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we could certainly do that, um, it'd just be space, but, um, we could, we could take a little.
It'd make more sense close to home if we're gonna do the close to home thing.
Too.
Yeah. I, I think that, that will be, um, that would be, you know, an additional, additional cost, right? To, because it'll take more people.
That's what we wanna compare.
Yeah, for sure, for sure, yeah.
But the teachers that you, we have now for pre-K, I mean, they would just be teaching in the close-to-home zone school for those children. So you have the staff for it, 'cause you have the staff for it now. So, it's just, uh, so if, in the, what, the rebuilding, the renovating and all that stuff, we have to take into idea of the cost of rooms to add pre-Ks for those zone schools.
Okay. Got you, got you. So that's an alternative?
Yes, that's us.
What might be helpful is to see where, um, what they're closer to, closer to homeschool would be, um, because right now, like, for instance, those that are at Paul Monroe are, you know, mostly, um, coming from the downtown area. So we'd have to look at class size and those types of things, just to kinda get a comparison. So I think I, I can work with, uh, Ms. Anderson to get that information of, you know, how many students are coming from what areas, so we can see what their closer to homeschools might be.
And then we'll have a better idea.
Okay.
So, Dr. Woodacre, so with this, the, going back to what you were saying, would there be two, two schools for pre-K? Hutcheson and possibly, you said we could combine, like, everyone at TC Miller? Well, I had, I had two, no, two children that went to pre-Ks, one at Hutcheson and one at a school that had two or three classes, and the experience was totally different. Because Hutcheson only has pre-K, they had a richer and more rewarding experience versus being separated out, not saying separated out, but being at a school that didn't have as many pre-Ks. And even Hutcheson had a huge celebration, graduation, and the other school didn't, and they knew each other. So they compared, and, so I, I'm really for that concentration of the pre-K. And that would give us, how many seats does Hutcheson have?
It's a hundred and eighty-five or something, I think.
And this will give us two hundred, so we're looking at about?
Yeah, um, currently, uh, there's about a hundred and fifty students at Hutcheson, including pre-K three and four.
Is Hutcheson mainly for, it's just, is this, I was reading somewhere that they had for children with disabilities?
They're separate, so those are the early childhood classes. The classes that we're talking about are part of the Virginia Preschool Initiative. They're VPI classrooms. So when, you know, I say they have about a hundred, between a hundred and forty and a hundred and fifty students, that's just the VPI classes. That's not including those early childhood, which might be two-to-four-year-olds.
Oh, okay.
And, and those are the students with disabilities.
And Dr. Carter, also, I, I know other elementary schools that have pre-Ks, they do graduations. They do graduations.
This one didn't. Um, and would that also include, like, would that help with that, the waiting, waiting list and also with the pre, the three-year-olds? What, what do we call that?
Pre-K three.
Pre-K three, would that help with the?
Well, it depends. So, the, on the waiting list conversation, if you just moved the ten classrooms you had and didn't add more teachers, it'd be about the same of what you had, but you would then, in the, excuse me, in the future, you would have additional classroom space to expand that, if you wanted to. If you wanted to do more, that would be fine. So, um, I think, you know, it's, it might be a phase of it, potentially.
So, but if we use TC, the building. So, but if we use TC, the building, we have to pay for, to keep in that open?
Utilities, and then you would need, you would need support staff.
So, yeah.
So a couple of comments. I just wanted to echo what Dr. Carter said. We recently toured Hutcheson after one of our agenda planning meetings. And my impression was that at Hutcheson, because it's a exclusively pre-K facility, they could have the staff there that's especially trained to deal with the children that maybe need more intensive supervision, training, interaction with adults. They can have a dedicated staff to that at Hutcheson, but when it's a couple of classrooms here, a couple of classrooms there, it's hard to have that kind of well-trained, dedicated staff at each of those sites. So that's, I'm supporting your argument that one, a dedicated facility is better than a scattered facility. But the other side of that is, as you just pointed out, if we're keeping a building open for pre-K that otherwise we would not keep open, then we're forfeiting the operational savings that we would have by closing that building. So there's, there's always a financial side to it. And the third thing I was going to say is expanding our pre-K offerings. You know, we've heard pretty universally from all the community comments we've had, that this is something that's important to the community. On the other hand, this would represent an, an expansion of what LCS is doing. We're, we're taking on an additional level of responsibility for pre-K training. Most of the facilities discussion is just concerning the facilities that we need to maintain the services that we are currently offering. So to me, there, it's a little bit different. I, I wonder if we should have a separate pre-K implementation plan and not mingle the facilities discussion with the pre-K quite as intimately. That an expansion of pre-K is going to require more financial resources. We're going to have to be asking city council to support it if we, if that's what we want to do. So it seems to me that it's, it's a little bit different in character than the rest of our facilities plan. Now, I'm not saying what we should do because of that remark. I'm just pointing out that it is an expansion of what we're doing in LCS, not just providing facilities for what we are currently doing.
I disagree.
Please.
If you want, if you want kids to read on grade level, it starts with early childhood education.
I'm not arguing against its value.
I don't think it's in, I don't think it, pre-K is an expansion of LCS. I think it's just the foundation of it. I think if you want kids to graduate on time, it starts with that. So, I mean, the argument is, is pretty evident. The data is out there that shows it. So if two hundred kids is on the waitlist, why not expand the program? Especially if those kids are having behavioral issues because they're staying at home with grandma. Why not bring them to school?
Again, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you.
But I am disagreeing. So it's not an expansion of LCS, it's the foundation of what we do.
Do, do the pre-K count, numbers count towards our ADM?
No.
They don't. So how do we fund pre-K?
We do receive currently for the fall this year's twenty-three, twenty-four. We receive about one point six million dollars in revenue for these students that are in the Virginia, the VPI program, Virginia Preschool Initiative program. So we do receive funding, but it's not the same as ADM.
So it's, does it able to break even at that funding level? Means no profit, no loss?
I, that I don't know. I'd have to, I'd have to look into what those expenditures are, but we certainly could see what we, what information we have.
I, I don't think anything we do breaks even. So maybe I, maybe I just can explain the cost difference. So my perspective on that, we can have a conversation about that, but so if you have the existing pre-K teachers and you move them into one central place, right, those, those positions already exist, right? That's not new expenditures. Then you have the existing TC Miller, if that's, if that's the place, positions that will be reabsorbed into the rest of the system. So those are different, what we call FTEs, or full-time equivalent positions that would actually go away, which is where you get most of your operational savings. And so you get most of your operational savings in that, in that scenario unless you were to add more, more classrooms. So you would still have to pay, you would probably have to pay for what we call a principal at that site, you know, maybe a, you know, administrative assistant. I guess a nurse, those sorts of things. There's a few hundred thousand dollars worth of cost there in addition to utilities. So you won't have quite as much savings. But the majority of the savings still is, is in, is in.
Yeah, excuse me, the per pupil expenditures for a full day of, of pre-K, both pre-K three and four are about eighty-three hundred dollars per student.
And how much does that grant pays for, covers that? Eighty-three hundred or?
Well, there's, that, that's what the revenue that's received, but there, you also have to keep in mind is that there is a, a local match piece to it. It's not a hundred percent, but there are. So our required piece for the local match of that fifteen hundred is, I don't know, around nine hundred thousand dollars.
We could, we could get the pre-K financials.
Yeah, I can get, we can get more information.
And I, and I'll say, the, the, that is also based on the composite index. And I know that because Chris Orson just texted me and told me that.
And also, speaking to the part about, well, pre-K is when they're all together, but you could say that's for first graders, second graders, third graders, fourth graders. Children thrive if they, and our city school teachers are, are loving and caring people. Children will thrive in their schools if you just give them that opportunity to. So I don't think having them all in one place is going to make a difference as far as their emotional.
You mentioned composite index. The GLRRC, they looked at the new funding formula. So will that impact how we look at pre-K or will it be the same status quo?
Well, it's.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Joint Legislative Committee at the state level, you know, they made a presentation of new funding formula this year, which hopefully legislature will consider.
So the composite index only changes once every two years. So the governor's budget will be released with the same composite index that we had in the original capital.
So it will not impact at least?
It will not impact any funding, correct.
Looking for dollar everywhere.
Yeah, we totally get it. So maybe just summarize what we, we, additional information unless anybody else has any thoughts. So what would it look like to do sort of a close to home component? So that every school has a pre-K. We can look at that from an operational, financial perspective. We know that there needs to be some, a, a more full pre-K implementation plan, and maybe we won't have that fully done, but we just can, maybe give you an idea of how that might be done, as well as the pre-K financials. Is there anything else that you need to?
Paul Monroe has, I think, about four sections of pre-K. About eighty students hardship from superintendent. So enough, eighty students, eighty?
It's sixteen in a class.
Hardship students, how many do we have?
Oh, oh, for babysitter hardship and superintendent placement, probably, I got a, I don't have the number off the top of my head.
Let's say eight, my estimate was about eighty students. So if you move pre-K out from there and you take that babysitter hardship, just suppose for a moment, then what impact does it have on that school? Will be able to create another domino effect?
And I think, I think that would be where you're sort of, and I think with the close to home zoning, it's going to be a complete look at the system, right? So you would balance those school districts, both in terms of numbers, but also in terms of demographics the best you can. And so I, I mean, it would open up additional space. But, you know, it would address some issues we have. You know, for instance, at Bedford Hills, where we have our Division One Autism Program there, so that, that takes space to do that. So there's, there's additional opportunities there. So I think that, I think that's part of it, is that there's, there's some potential, I think it gives you some flexibility potentially.
And I can speak to that because I was at Paul Monroe and we were in those classes, and then when the pre-K came, we had, first grade had to all leave and go down the other hall. So if those classes are emptied and they come back, then there's a shift and there'd be more open rooms if that, if that expands or people come or, you know.
Dr. Carter?
For close to home, I know, Dr. Edwards, you've stated that we've been able to move different, not so much zones, but students. So how are we making sure we're maintaining proper guidance to, to change or to re, re, to look at this, the zoning?
So when, whenever we do a sort of proposal of shifting, this is what you can shift. Each kid's unique identifying information shifts too, so I might be able to look at that from address or from gender or from socioeconomic, socioeconomic status or where are ELL kids, you know, so we can look at those things through that lens to make some decisions about tho, those proposals before you say this one is what you really want to do.
And we have a tool for that?
There is a.
There is a tool.
Yeah, there's a tool.
All right, any other, any other information that you need? Okay, so we'll, we'll get to that. That's, that's good, sir. Okay, those were the good ones. So on the next, Austin, we've got two more slides. We'll start with the Phase One actions. And again, these are immediate actions, what we think need to be taken within two years. We'll just give you some context, and there's not necessarily a question on this one, but we just want to share our perspective on, on how we will go about doing this if close to home zoning is the direction that we go. So we sort of split this in between what school administration will do versus what the school board will need to do. The first is that we, again, we've already provided the consultant with a student location data. That's simply a data file that has the student unique identifier, as well as their demographic information, as well as their address. We know where they live. So that way we can use that geographic information tool to say, as we draw boundaries, we understand what the demographic concentrations are in each one of the proposed schools. We'll then worked with MGT to develop three attendance boundary options. Again, based on those implementation plans that we'll talk about in just a few minutes, that are selected by the board. We'll do that in, in November. And we will also, at the same time, once those sort of basic plans are done, we're going to collaborate with elementary principals, as well as school leadership, to get their perspective on the ground on, on, on these items. As well as, of course, the Transportation Department, because there is a significant impact to them as well. We'll provide that sort of initial review to the, to the public as well. That's sort of that November, December timeframe. We will then publish those attendance zone options as we present them to the school board, and we'll provide the opportunity for public input. That'll happen in January, as well as a public hearing that will either, I have February here, but it'll be January, February, that the school board will, will need to hold on those proposed attendance zones. And ultimately, we'd like, we'd ask you to make a decision on those attendance boundaries by March of this year, if that's, if we go in that direction. And so, so that will allow us to, I think, make those transitions, build the new routes for, for school buses as we go along. What you'll find in the next couple of slides is that in some cases, depending on how we do this, this might require a secondary rezoning. What we would propose to do is to figure all of that out at one time and, and say, okay, here's the first one, and then a year from now, this is what will happen, so that we're not doing it again and, and doing that whole process again. So that's, that's what we'll propose to do.
And let me just add one point too, about your collaborate with elementary principals and school leadership teams. Again, understanding that this most likely will impact all of our schools, whether it's just one little block in this school zone, we've already, we've had a conversation with our elementary principals to, to ask them to start thinking about their school leadership teams and who can sort of work with us, work with MGT at the building level to really take a closer look at the kids, the, the zoning, the concerns and those types of things. So while that has not been formalized, we at least started that conversation about, you know, the elementary rezoning may affect almost every elementary school. So while your school may not be, you know, one of the schools in scenario three specifically mentioned, there it may be an effect too.
So a question, how, what is, how long, like, what are the, how long does it take to do rezoning? Like, what are the steps? Does it take you a month to do it? Does it take you?
Yeah, I think the, so the, the formal, you know, geographic analysis is, is not a terribly complicated process. So there, there's a computer program that, that will spit out suggestions, and then, and then we will refine them as they, as, as appropriate. And that, so it, it'll take some time, but it's, it's, it's not like we're, you know, it's not like the old days where you're probably.
Where you draw this line and cut off at this street.
So fortunately, the, the power of GIS is amazing.
Yeah, okay.
And that just speaks to like what AI can do, they can do quickly, but we have to have a human look at that too, right? So it's not just an AI generated, it really has to have a little oversight.
And that's the importance of collaborating first with, I think, the school leaders and the school building leaders. And then, and then hearing, again, really important to hear from the public on what impacts that those will have. So I, I didn't, I didn't ask this question, but if there's any other further information that you need on, on this, we'd, we'd love to know what that is.
Could they send you emails if something pops up in somebody's mind?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Okay, so if not, we'll go to the next one. And this is, this number four is really the big question that will take some time. And again, we'll, we don't need to vote tonight. There's a couple of points that we just want to bring out, and just, this really relates to timing of where all this, this sort of occurs. And, and I, you know, I don't know where everyone's mind was on everything, but we just want to point out that there's a couple of different ways that you could do it. There's impacts, and sort of pros and cons to each one, and we just want to talk through what that might be. Again, these are just simply four that we see as potential options. And so what we're going to ask you is, what implementation plan does the board support? And, and sort of when do we do all the things that we want to, we want to do? So the first potential option is you would close Sandusky and convert or close TC Miller immediately next year. The second would be that you would, and the second and third one are really similar, but one would be closing Sandusky first, the other would be closing TC Miller first, and then doing the other, the following year. There's some pros and cons to that. And the, the fourth is closing and converting TC Miller and closing Sandusky, not this coming year, but the next year. Again, pros and cons on that. And so we'll ask you what information, I'm going to go through some, some of those pros and cons over the next several slides, but I'll just ask you to be thinking about what initial information you might need, what perspectives you might have as we go forward. We just want to make sure that all those details are on the table, all our perspectives are on the table as well. So also, if you go to the next slide. Okay, so the first one is sort of the option one, and I, I will, I will point out also in your board docs, there are more of these financial analysis sheets that show you a little bit more information on that. They are color coded, so you can, you can see them. And they, they refer, and we'll get to that in just a minute, but they refer to where we're going as well. So the first is that we're, we would close and convert TC Miller and close Sandusky in fall of two thousand twenty-four. Again, those, though it again, happened for next school year, that close to home zoning is completed without those two schools in the system. I just want to point out that it's not likely that Bass would be, the expansion would be complete if it occurs for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. So as a result of that, because it would not likely be ready for the next school year, there would be sort of a secondary necessary rezoning. So the initial rezoning that would occur as a result of those closures in fall of twenty twenty-four, as, as well as the close to home zoning, and then the sort of later rezoning to rebalance with the Bass expansion that's necessary. Couple of pros and cons of that. The pros, we think that there's sort of this immediate cost savings that we've talked about. There's sort of minimal waiting time in closed or converted schools. So you've heard folks talk about, you know, sort of what's next, if there's another year, there's, that is a concern. And again, if we expand pre-K, there's, there's more capacity available. On the con side, again, there's sort of multiple disruptions to students and staff and families. And again, specific disruptions to those schools that we particularly impact.
So it means you'll end up moving kids multiple times.
That's right. So you do twice, essentially. And what we provided, and I won't read this to you on, on this page, on, on the next slide, is just a, a draft general timeframe for how each one of these things occur. Each one of these, we've, we've already started, as I mentioned before, the removal of portable classrooms from Sheffield, and we'll go through, and there's some nuance to each one. But again, much of this is dependent on that. I, I will say, we, we've assumed twelve to fifteen-month construction period after about a five-month procurement period for Bass Elementary. You all will remember the time it took for us to get through the procurement for Dunbar. And so it, it does take some time, so just, we probably would not be ready for that until probably May of this coming year or of twenty twenty-four. So just under, just make sure we understand what the timeframe is, plus twelve to fifteen months of construction. That's based on some conversations we've had.
So I wasn't here for the procurement. How long did that take?
It, it took about five months.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, what you're saying is public-private partnership will expedite, but not expedite it to have it by fall?
It, it'll, yeah, it'll expedite, but I don't, I don't think there's any way, even if you start a construction, you know, in January, I don't know that you could have it. I just don't, I think that's. You know, but I, I just don't, I think that's, that's not likely, so. But it will, but we'll expedite from a traditional design, bid, bill process.
So, um, I think of the, of the four different, uh, sequences here that you've talked about, uh, I think three of them have a two-phase rezoning in them. So my question for all of those is for, is can we, can we estimate how many students would be rezoned twice? Now, I know that that would depend upon the rezoning decisions. But if, if we had a rough estimate, that might make a difference. If, if one sequence involved, uh, five hundred students that have to be rezoned twice and another one involved uh, a hundred, that would be pretty significant, I think. So I don't know if that's possible to come up with information.
I, off, you know, off the top of my head, I'm, I'm not sure how we would do that, but let me think about it and see what we can figure out.
Personally, for me, one variable is constant, is the least disruption for our kids.
Yes.
So there's absolutely no compromise on that. So if any of these, your scenarios is putting multiple disruptions in their life, personally, to me, that's not acceptable.
And I'm right there with you, we, um, just, I think one person, stage today, we've just come off from the pandemic, students are just coming back and settling in. And like I said, I was in this, the same thing, and you do not want to continue. Some people may be fine, I'm a little rigid. I don't, I didn't like being pushed from one school to the next. So the less disruption we can have for students and staff, the best.
Well, in addition to just changing schools, the students that are at TC Miller, that kind of have almost a different philosophy, if you will, about education, that's going to be even a greater transition for them than it is going to be for Sandusky Elementary students. You know, they've been in a school of innovation, where are they going to be? How are, are they going to still be able to pursue the areas of interest that they have? All of that, I think that's something that really has to be.
Dr. Edwards, will the school for innovation, uh, transplant?
Yeah, that's something that we would have to prioritize. And, uh, again, that has a applicant status and a, well, currently an applicant and his own status, an applicant status. So that would have to factor into some of these.
So I think also adding to that first list is my mind, I just lost it, what you said. The ren- um, for innovation, then that needs to be added there. And also Bass is year-round, a lot of people don't want that. So I think tho- those two factors have to be included.
So maybe I could just offer a, a different way to say it, is that we need to include in phase one, a, um, the adoption and development of a programmatic vision, division-wide, is that fair?
Dr. Edwards, you running a dual track at Bass right now, or is it all?
Can we write that? Um, the, the transition program is on it.
This phase one?
The first phase. Not ideal, but, uh, making it work.
Um, so the, so the next potential option, and, and again, number two and number three are sort of similar, just opposites. Uh, where we would close one school next year, uh, the following school would, would, would be the next year. Again, uh, this would, each of those would require two rezoning phases. They are nuanced for the reasons that you mentioned about the innovation school as well. Uh, so this first one is uh, related to closing Sandusky. Um, that is more movement of students, there's, that's a bigger school uh, in that item. Um, so again, pros on that are it's, this is a sort of a slightly more intentional process where we're making sure that we're slowly, uh, doing this. There is some cost savings. Again, uh, it is disruptive to staff and, and again, specific disruption to those students, students. And you'll see a timeline, and really the only difference between the two timelines for the second and third one are which school closes when, and you can, you can see that.
Now, you say disruptive, but doesn't, doesn't, won't this will be at the beginning of the school year, like after summer break? So it's not in the middle of their year, it's just when school starts the next fall.
And I would, would suggest we'd probably do that for any of the scenarios.
Yes, okay, so it really isn't disruptive so much as it's just a change.
It, it is a change, yeah.
When you're close to home, rezon will be done prior to closure.
Right.
Because my assessment was about fifty percent from Heritage are not zoned, they come from uh, downtown. And at Sandusky, correct me if I'm wrong, twenty-five percent come from downtown. Uh, twenty-five percent from Timberlake, further down.
Yeah, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
So what I'm saying is when you do the close to home rezon, the district may look, uh, different.
Sure, absolutely.
And, and I don't know if we said this, but, um, despite which plan we choose, we want to be able to say what the end plan is. So even if you do choose one that has a, you go here first, what we don't want to do to the community is say, and wait and see, we'll figure out where you're going next. So it would be presenting that to families that says your end zone, your end plan might be here with a temporary stop here.
I am just still having trouble with this close to home. We're seeing that the concentration of schools are in war too, and I've heard, um, descriptions or descriptives as, um, mostly African-American, I didn't hear that, but, and also lower social eco- economic or advan- advantaged. So how are we going to make sure that we maintain diversity in those schools?
So I, it, it's a, it is a, is a tremendously important part of our, our perspective and our conversation. So, I mean, technically, wha- what you do is you, you draw those zones and you do your very best to balance them to the best extent you can. Um, and that ultimately will be just, will provide that information to the school board and, and where that is. Now, there's lots of different, uh, components to diversity, uh, and there's, that means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. And so we want to make sure we provide as many different, uh, opportunities and informa- uh, pieces of information as we can to you, so that you can assess that. Um, and again, what, the idea is that the, the mapping will help us figure out what the impact of those different decisions may be. So if a, if a zone looks, you know, like this, it might have this percentage of white or black students, and if it looks like that, it might look very different. And so you'll have that information upfront and know, really have the information to know what, what decision you're making.
And I think we're focused on black and white, but there is more Hispanic and Asian.
And I, and I, and I don't, I don't mean.
Yeah, no, no, I'm saying it's just not always just black and white.
I, I hope no one got that, but I didn't mean just that there, I know there's a lot of diversity. But my question is, so then, so we look at the schools that, so it will appear that the, some of the schools, I know there is the one that's, that's the furthest, is that, um, Bedford Hills? And then we have Heritage Elementary. Those two are the furthest out, so I can see those, the concentrations. Is, this is just, it's a little scary. When we're looking at close, oh, that, this one, what I was going to say is, okay, sleep is great. What I was going to say is that when you do close to home, someone is not going to be close to home to keep this to, or as close, yes. Closer, right, but what's closer, so?
It's, it's probably not like a.
So it's not, you know, going to be totally, so we can't.
And there will be, there will be no perfect solution.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think just given the goals of, of ensuring that we're maintaining diverse and inclusive schools and reducing our, our, our transportation impacts, and I think certainly it's a cost thing, but also it's a reliability and ability to actually fulfill the mission. And transportation is just, it's, uh, the system right now is just tremendously complex, and that's why I think we have some of the challenges that we do. Um, and so it's, it's multifaceted and I, and I, but, but your point is well taken. It, it's not, you know, it's not something that we do flippantly.
And if I could speak to Dr. Carter's, what she was saying, we've had parents I know that have complained, why is my child on the bus forty minutes? You know, they're complaining that their child's on the bus too long. So, uh, I think this is trying to alleviate that issue.
So, um, on, on number three, the, it, the difference again is, is which one you would close or convert first. In this case, the other difference would be that you would have the potential, uh, to do the pre-K change if you wanted to do that uh, next year as opposed to the year after that. Um, again, that's, that's something that you could consider. Um, same pros and cons, uh, as well. Uh, and then the last one, uh, this is a, uh, an option to close or convert TC Miller uh, and close Sandusky in fall of twenty twenty-five, that gives you a year out. Um, that would delay rezoning until twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Uh, Bass expansion hopefully would be, uh, hopefully would be complete, uh, would be very close to being complete. Uh, that would allow us to then, to Dr. Day's point earlier, remove the portables, uh, at that point. We'd keep them in place to hold that. Um, uh, close to home zoning would be completed without those, with the pa- capacity added. Uh, and then we, again, would only require one rezoning process, uh, and one disruption. Well, disruption might be the right word, but it's one change, uh, for folks. Uh, for the pros, um, again, least, least disruption to students and staff. Again, the whole city is being rezoned at one time. I think we could probably argue about whether that's a pro or con, but it is a, it is a reality. Um, and if we're converting for pre-K, that would certainly add that capacity for the future. Um, there would not be cost savings that you, we've discussed in the first year. Uh, and then that, on a, on a con side for both of those, uh, is that, that final year and that, that close, the sort of soon-to-be-close schools, I think would be pretty challenging. I think you've heard that tonight, so I don't think that, you know, we shouldn't take that lightly. Um, so I think the principals would be, um, just would ask that you consider, you know, them leading those schools, uh, during that sort of additional final year. Um, and again, um, there are, there's a, there's an example. Um, as we go, uh, to the next slide, uh, of the potential summary of actions there. Um, and again, the question will be, which of these scenarios does the board want to consider? We can, we can evaluate a couple of them. Um, and then what, uh, additional information do you need in order to make that decision? Again, not asking you to make a decision tonight, uh, but we do just want to hear from you about what information you might need, as well as what, uh, in, in as we move forward, what scenarios would you, uh, want to consider, uh, moving forward? Again, you don't have to tell us this tonight, but.
Okay, well, I have a question.
Sure.
The, why would you delay zoning until twenty-five, twenty-six? Couldn't you do it next year? And then have it in place and ready?
Oh, I changed that, I'm sorry. That should be done, that should be done, uh, this coming, this coming year, that should be.
Oh, okay, I was like, why do I?
I thought I changed it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. And you know, I was thinking of that one con, final year to soon be closed. Then this gives them, everybody two years to be prepared.
Yeah.
And that's a good amount of time.
So in the last scenario, what I'm hearing from you is the rezoning will be done in twenty-four, twenty-five.
Well, I, I would, I would do the, well, I, I know, I would say I would do the, you wouldn't, I'm sorry, I, I may have misunderstood what you said. So I, I would do the analysis now, so we know where that is. But then I wouldn't actually make the physical changes until the next year, because that way you only have to do one rezoning.
How long does it take to do that analysis, when you said this, it's software-driven? Could you bring a status report to this board sometime in spring?
Oh, yes, so I, our, our goal would be to bring something, options for you to consider in January.
How, if you do the rezoning analysis and it's ready in January and you implement it in this coming season, twenty-four, twenty-five, how would they be moving twice?
So if, if, in, in this fourth scenario, you would not, you would wait to close those two schools in twenty-five, twenty-six? And so you would have to.
I got you, I got, thank you, I, I, I didn't click.
Sure. So any other information that you would need, um, for that information? I didn't, I don't think I picked up anything that.
And if, if you get questions, would you put them, uh, later on in the board docs, so public can see what the questions were asked?
Absolutely.
Uh, so that way, you know, it's a public information.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next, uh, this is, this sort of moves into the future phases. These are these actions to be completed within seven to ten years. Um, so again, those, scenario three included, um, from a very basic statement, full renovations to Lincoln Elementary, Paul Monroe, Paramount and RS Payne. Uh, future expansions to Lincoln Elementary, Bedford Hills and, and Paramount. And actually, this is where, this is where these, um, color codes come in, uh, in these, this financial analysis. So, in, on the next slide, um, in scenario three, it wasn't entirely clear to, to at least us, uh, from the board meeting on the nineteenth, whether the board intended to include those renovations uh, as identified, full renovations, you know, the, the sort of to the studs renovations. Um, or if we should limit those to, again, those safety and maintenance improvements that we identified. Again, the difference being much less expensive to do those safety and maintenance items, but it's not, you know, nearly as, 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 as much of an improvement. Um, it also, uh, wasn't entirely clear with the approval of, uh, approval of the Bass expansion, if the board intended to continue to support future expansions at Paramount, Lincoln, Bedford Hills. Again, as I mentioned before, I think it would make sense to probably have them in the plan, but maybe not, um, uh, do them right away, um, as I mentioned on the slide there. Again, this would allow us to sort of protect these spaces that we've identified later, and just so that we don't build a a baseball field where we think we should build a future, future building, right? And that's, that's really the intent of that. Uh, so we've, in, on, uh, slide twenty-six, we've provided, um, a quadrant approach, these are, are, are colors there, a line, uh, on the screen with the colors on your sheets, uh, so you, because it's, it's just a lot of data, it's a lot of information. So use that information to evaluate what, uh, each one of these potential options may cost and what you may allow for. And so again, uh, with question five is given the Bass expansion and how that was approved, along with scenario three, uh, which capital improvement approach does the board support? And again, uh, what additional information do you need to make this decision?
So the financial information gives us the cost difference between the full renovations and the safety and maintenance renovations. But I, I think we should see some details about what those specific projects are. At, at any one of these schools, what, what is the additional project that would be included under a uh, sort of the full expansion versus the safety and maintenance?
So based on your numbers, the full renovation is about hundred and twenty-five million?
Which, which color are you in?
I'm looking at green, uh.
Green, um, it's about, it's a hu- yeah, in twenty twenty-three costs those, just those renovations, well, those, that, that includes the expansions. So just the renovations are included in, uh, the orange item that has full renovations, no expansions, and that's a hundred and hundred and one million, hundred and six million, sorry. So you can study these, certainly don't expect you to, uh, digest those right the second. As always, you can certainly reach out and, and ask any questions you may have. Yes, sir.
But these numbers have high school and middle schools and elementary schools, the whole nine yards.
The whole division, yes.
Right, so, uh, the scenarios were restricted only to elementary schools.
Right, so in, but I think from the perspective, and I think we heard this from the community as well, is just to make sure that we're also thinking about the, the the facility needs at those, those high school and middle schools as well. And we just want to make sure those are on your mind as well, just to understand what, um, what costs are coming. I mean, they, there are, there are real costs. And, and if you look at the, uh, if you just add up the, the secondary costs, there's some pretty significant costs associated with those. Of course, Glass, Glass is a big building, Heritage, uh, by, by the end of this planning period, we're sort of looking at twenty thirty-five, by that point, it'll be twenty years old. So, you know, there will be some things that need to be done, um, at that point.
Because hundred and three million looks pretty, um, high, large number, but when you look at only elementary, it's an average of three million for safety maintenance.
That's, I think that's a fair, a fair number.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, and like, it's only about thirty million dollars.
If you take, if you take all those out, if you take the secondary zone. So then, and that's an approach, right? I mean, you, I mean, you, you all have to kind of help us figure out what the political approach is on where, where you want to, uh, make that ask. Um, we just want to make sure that it's clear the bigger picture of all the schools and what the costs could potentially be. And certainly, if we want to start with elementary schools, I mean, that, elementary schools has been where the least investment has been, frankly. Um, certainly has been a new high school at Heritage, renovation a number of years ago, Glass, um, and also the other, other middle schools, but it is, it is a good thing to be talking about middle, uh, elementary schools, if you think.
Just purely from a layman's perspective, if I embark on a hundred and three million dollar uh, ma- expansion and maintenance project, then I could rather build Sandusky for sixty-two million. And I have a brand-new elementary school, you see what I'm saying? Just purely from a layman's perspective.
But you do that with one school, right? And so I think, you know, there's, there's, there are tremendous needs throughout the division, uh, and, and that's, I think that's the point.
So, but it would, I'm sorry, would it easier just to see the elementary though portion?
We, we can, I can give you that, yeah, so.
And I think because these documents are public and we have multiple audiences, multiple eyes, multiple lenses looking at them, um, to be fully transparent, we want our public to understand. looking at them, to be fully transparent, we want our public to understand that as we look at the future of elementary schools, we're doing it in context with also looking at all of our buildings. Because what we don't want to do is look at elementary only, and then in fifteen years, someone look back and say, well, why weren't you considering the middle schools? You knew they were going to get here and they were going to need maintenance too. And in a sense, you know, some of that has been some of the conversation around Sandusky, right? Why wasn't the maintenance done when the maintenance was scheduled to be done? So we're, we're just trying to really do due diligence to make sure everybody in the community has information that sort of says, it gets into our thinking, what are they thinking about? Are they really looking at big picture, long-term? And I think that's part of what the community needs to see us vet and do. And we can, again, look at the big picture, pull it apart, look at the elementary picture, separate it any way that you guys want.
And I would just say, I think that the, the hope in this whole process is that it provides, hopefully it's me the next, you know, number of years doing this, right? But if you kick me out, somebody else comes and can see sort of a plan for how we're going to make various changes over the next decade to fifteen years. Because we're in a position right now, we just don't have that, that analysis, just for whatever reason, it won't happen, right? And so we need, we need to know where those, where we're going. And so I think certainly thinking about the money and getting the right strategy is tremendously important. We just, I think the more important part is really just developing that roadmap so that future iterations of the board and, and school administration staff can at least have something to go by. Not that they have to necessarily do what we say, but there's something that's, an option there.
This is not a city council, but you know, if you look at the debt ratio, do we have the space there to borrow more money?
Right, and so that's, that's certainly not our decision. But I think to Mr. Julius' point earlier about, you know, there are options that the state does provide. You know, certainly the, the one percent sales tax option is, is something that is very valuable and has been tremendously successful. And in communities like Danville and Pennsylvania County that, you know, we may not have thought would, would pass, and it, and it did, and ultimately. And they are making tremendous improvements to their schools as a result of that. That would generate a, a lot of revenue to provide those, those capital improvements. And so that's certainly, you know, would be, it's just a political conversation to have, but that would be a way to do it. And I think would be a good one, up to one percent. You don't have to do all one percent.
Hey.
Okay, so just, just the additional information, I'm, we'll just provide the elementary portion, just so you have that information, okay? All right, in the next couple of slides, I just want to just kind of brief you on these. These are not decisions you necessarily have to make unless you disagree that we shouldn't, we should be asking for these expansions. But our perspective, I think, right now is that we should just identify them in the master plan and where future expansions might occur. And I think we already talked about slide twenty-eight. That's just about expansion of Bass, what, what capacity you could have, again, what the, the cost process will be. And if you go to the next slide, here's where we're sort of envisioning where that might go. So we're on the backside of the school. And of course, Bass has the benefit of a full gym and auditorium. We have, there is some space there, and fortunately, the, the building is multi-story with an elevator already. So the footprint is much smaller, so it actually provides a little bit, actually better construction opportunity for us. The challenge on the site, parking and traffic flow is a challenge. It's pretty poorly designed at this point. We need to address that as well in, in sort of upcoming potential opportunities as we, as if, if that expansion does occur.
Where's the new playground? Is that up in the upper right area there? Okay, thank you.
Which is convenient because, and it may be, and we'll see what we, if.
I would, I was a little nervous about that, that they were going to put it exactly where we needed to put new classrooms. So I hope, oh, I hope that doesn't.
Well, so I think there's some options there. So we, we talk about building classrooms, and that certainly could be the case. But it, it may be that in the expansion, maybe that's where the cafeteria comes, and then we turn the cafeteria into classrooms, it could be different. I don't know that's what we'll do, that's an option. And then it would be next to the playground as you go out to research it. So, so I think there's some potentially good options as we, as we, as we do it.
And I was thinking for the park, I mean, for the, the people come pick up their kids, because at Paul Monroe, if no. So, you know, they just call them up and they line them up in the room, and then they call them when their car is here.
Absolutely.
So that's one way to get around having to build a bigger, you know.
And I think in the Dominion Seven study, there was some mention of possibly needing another access route. I guess that would involve the city, because that would be road planning and stuff like that. It would be right-way issues and things.
So the access point would be if you sort of go out the top, upper left corner. But there's a pretty significant ravine, it would be a bridge and, and we're talking about a lot of money. I think it's doable physically, but you know, it's just pricey.
It's a city.
Yeah.
Dr. Ward, when you say expansion, so it means we'll have two trains? One will be the CIP, the other will be the expansion, or they'll merge?
I think all of it's got to merge.
So all the CIP funded projects will be under.
So what, what we'll do is hopefully we'll, we'll come to some conclusions on the twenty-fourth. I'll get to this in just a second. But our CIP submission is due on the twenty-seventh, so we need to have this information. We're going to preset a lot of that stuff so it's ready to go. But that'll all be included, whatever, whatever decisions you may make.
So the previous CIP items will stay there, or will they change?
We, we will include, so the trouble is that we included a number of items that did not get funded, such as the gym at Heritage, right? But there's things like athletics facilities, like the track at Glass and Heritage too. But certainly the track at Glass is, is in pretty dire condition, that the turf fields and other things that are out there. So we're going to include those, and hopefully they get through. And we'll, we'll start to include all this bigger picture items as well. But I don't, I, but to your point, I don't want to lose sight of the items that are not maybe in the, in the physical space of the building, but are important parts of where we need to go.
Dr. Ward.
Aren't some of these items already identified on the CIP?
They are, yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
So we, they've just been pushed down and.
Well, what happened, and, and I, and we understand why this happened, but we, we submitted a lot of things last year. That pretty much got eliminated with the decisions that were made related to the funding availability, right? And so we're going to put them back on and, and we'll see where we go.
Going back to Heritage Elementary Gymnasium, they said they're putting it on hold. The school closure decision is made, so it means they'll back on the CIP now?
We're going to, we're going to put it on and we'll see what happens, absolutely. Austin, if you go to the next slide, this is just an idea of where a future expansion at Lincoln Elementary might occur. We would probably replace the pod, that is the original sort of sixties or seventies pod, that has some good attributes, but, but again, it's just not really suited for today. There isn't also an opportunity, there's not a full gym at, at Lincoln, so I think in this space, you, again, we provide an opportunity for thirty thousand square feet here. That would include a gym as well. So we do be thinking about those things, again, that'll be a future, future opportunity that we just identify. Expansion at Paramount, this one's a little bit more difficult, just because of the topography of the site. But we would probably likely put it over on the existing blacktop and then rearrange the traffic as well as the, that would be there. So good thing about that is you would provide better access to the gym. That might, might be able to get that without having to go outside. And then, again, this is about fifteen thousand square feet on one story.
Guys, the walkway to the gym right now, you know, we were there the other day in winter. These kids have to walk outside into the gymnasium. So a controlled environment walkway from building to the gymnasium.
Absolutely, that'd be very valuable. And if nothing else, in the next, you know, in the more immediate term, maybe we do a, a canopy. Like, like we have at Bedford Hills, that would be, I think, pretty valuable. We just want to have that.
So would that building be connected to the other, to the gym, so?
We'd probably do some kind of breezeway.
Oh, well.
It may not be directly connected, but it'd be some kind of breezeway. Sort of, sort of similar to, and if you go to the next slide on Bedford Hills, it would be sort of similar there as well. And again, this is just more space, this would provide twenty thousand square feet. All right, so the last, the last slide, we, we've talked about a lot of things. I really appreciate the conversation, the feedback is really good. They, you've given us a lot of work to, to, to gather information. But there are lots of other things that we needed, we will be working on to discuss. You heard them from, from folks in the community tonight as well. First is related to talent management. Again, our, our staff, and the most important thing we do is put incredible people with our students every single day. Some of these staff reassignment procedures, that will be dependent on some of the decisions that we do need you to make. But that, I think, will certainly need to, need to occur. And then we also have our programmatic vision, we talked about just a few minutes ago. Again, there's pre-K, there's twelve services that are, that are offered. And, and where do the different programs, and what impacts and how they might evolve over time? Programs like the Go Center, programs like the Innovation Schools, how those things, certainly the elements of them are provided. How those, our vision for how they might evolve into the future. I think tremendously important for us to talk about as a school board and as a school division for the next coming years. And I think that'll be important to include into our master plan. So that's the information that I have to give. Hope, certainly would take any questions you might have.
So the SFI will be designated as part of this. So TC Miller closes, which will be the new building, taking that school for innovation.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
So the TC Miller building is closed, let's say, a year or two year from now. There'll be a building designated as School for Innovation.
Yeah, we're going to try to continue our SFI programs. And we're, we're also adding new programs, like we all have the Lab School at Lincoln. But this gives us an opportunity to look at our bigger picture programmatic and how our elementary schools feed into our middle schools and what do our middle schools do for our high schools. And you've seen sort of the backend of the middle school, high school plan. But even with our schools of innovation, how do we address innovation? Most of their charters were done in nineteen ninety-four. And there's some great things that they are doing that we absolutely should continue, but, and how do we enhance that? And I think Dr. Ward, you alluded a little bit when we talked about business and communications, and there's elements of those things that we can add to our programs to make them, enhance them. And the other thing is just looking at gifted education, which was another one of the things that we had talked about, and how do we expand those offerings for children in our division? So that part, and, and we purposely put it on this slide because we didn't want anyone watching or listening, particularly our staff and families going, you're talking about buildings, 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 but you're not talking about people, people, people. And, and I think it was said here tonight that people, combined with the programs, make for the experience. And obviously, if we have excellent buildings that aren't cold and leaky, that's great. So we just want you all to know, there's a lot more for us to talk about and share with you, share with the community. And we, we put a placeholder for, they're coming soon, more not fifteen-minute conversations, but conversations worth board meeting time, as well as when we talk about talent management, that takes us out to the schools and working with schools and principals and teachers and staff to really talk about what it is that we're trying to provide for our, our kids and, and what are our staff interests and how do we make this work?
Thank you, Dr. Ward. We move to the new item, new business, item K-one, all Virginia.
Okay, yep. In the middle of all this, we've got a new plan for the, coming from the governor, all in Virginia, which is a high intensity tutoring plan. And we just wanted to share with you tonight where LCS is. And they have been quite busy over the last two weeks. Mrs. Cruz is here, along with Ms. Pugh. Mrs. Cruz is our Director of Instruction and Program. And she has been leading the all-in Lynchburg City Schools, the AIM initiative, and she's going to share that with us tonight.
Good evening. I, I know, I know we've sat through a lot of information tonight, but this is extremely important for our students. And I know, just to give a little background, there was the initiative that came down from the governor and then has been pushed by Department of Education, and this is again, across all of Virginia. And the goal was to target our third through eighth grade students with a plan that would, would help them receive high intensity tutoring and help them accelerate and, and close some of those achievement gaps. So I'm just going to walk you through the overview. Our team has been incredible, they've been meeting hours and hours and hours, and we've been getting to schools to make sure that we get the input and make sure that that's a very individualized approach for our students in those specific school buildings. So what we'll go through, the following presentation, again, collection of resources that focuses on that student development and prioritizing skills to accelerate at-risk students to their grade level. That's very important for us and, and what that, what that would require. So I won't read through the entire overview, you all have access to this. But again, the Virginia High Intensity Academic Tutoring is a research-based approach. And we are targeting and pulling from effective models of high intensity tutoring. We have taken that playbook that has been pushed down from VDOE. We have scanned it, we have scanned it, and we've scanned it again. And we wanted to make sure that we modeled something that was very inclusive and direct to Lynchburg City Schools. And we very much appreciate those recommendations that have come down from the state. We have been collaborating with other members and other districts across the region to ensure that we are taking as much feedback as possible when we are building the plan for ourselves, but again, making that very individualized for us. So what are some of the requirements and the division flexibilities? Again, it's grades three through eight that are being targeted for this at-risk or non-proficient group of students. And there are two categories. And again, a lot of this is defined on the VDOE website. And a lot of the information that has gone out to schools and will go out to parents shortly, we'll provide more information on that about the selection of the students and what the requirements were to be in that at-risk or non-proficient category and what type of tutoring that they would receive. The dosage is varying, and we again, are making, making sure that we are working with our staff, not only our principals, our assistant principals, our coaches and our, and our educators in the building, but we are really reaching out and seeing what's going to be the most powerful, the most impactful to move the needle for our students. The duration time, again, I mentioned the at-risk and the non-proficiency. The duration time for at-risk students would start at that eighteen weeks. And where we intend to start our plan at would be that we would wrap just short of spring break to make sure that we can go back in and provide some, some additional tutoring resources before any standardized testing would occur in the spring season. Our ratio, again, we're adhering to the recommendations of the Virginia Department of Education that's aligned to that playbook, and our recommendations would be that one to ten ratio. And we want to stick as closely to that as possible as we're working along with our students. We understand and realize the impact of small group instruction and that direct instruction. We also recognize the impact of monitoring data and the attendance component within this as well. Tutors, we will be working with our staff within the buildings, whether that be our instructional assistants, our coaches. We, we consider this to be an all-hands-on-deck so that we can, again, close those achievement gaps for our students and accelerate our students to the level that we know that they're capable of achieving. So we want to make sure that we are working with our staff to provide that training. And we will start to reach out to the community to see if we have interest within tutors. And if you all are looking at the VDOE site, there is an area on there for folks to sign up for to, for that tutoring component. And those lists would then be cycled down to our school. And we would go through the process of looking at who signed up for that, providing them training on that high-impact tutoring model and working with them individually to ensure that they are prepared to go in and work with our students. Materials and data tracking, the personalized sessions should be grounded in grade-level instruction. We understand and recognize the importance of providing grade-level instruction and grade-level instructional materials to our students to help them rise to meet what we know that they are capable of. So again, we're focused, when we go in for this tutoring component, we are strictly focused on providing that grade-level material so that we can help our students accelerate and achieve what we know that they're capable of. Attendance has to be submitted monthly. We will take daily attendance as we are participating in the tutoring component, but we will submit that monthly data to the state as the requirement each month. We will also practice that data, that data monitoring component. And our wonderful, wonderful CNI team has taken the opportunity to build a dashboard where we'll be able to house all, all of that material that is, again, very specific to the school. The data monitoring, any schedule changes, any resources that we may have and utilize suggestions, updates, and the communication logs for them. So what's our timeline look like? All of this rolled out to us in September, and we have been working. we have been working very, very hard since then. Um, October sixteenth is the date that our division plan is due. We have, uh, we have that, uh, ready to go for preview. Again, we are working with our schools, and, um, we're going through that process even throughout this week. We met with our elementary principals again and met with our middle school principals. Our CNI team works every day on some part of this to make sure that it again is very inclusive and very, uh, very in- impactful and intense, uh, intensive for our students. So they're doing the work for that while understanding the need for that individualized approach per school and what that may look like. So we've worked through September on those, uh, on that communication and the planning phases. October, we have gone through the administrative meetings. We're continuing to have those, uh, reviewing data. We have, uh, built a dashboard again for that review of data to see who falls in what category, um, and help those, uh, help the administrators start to, um, desegregate that data as well. Um, again, plans will be ready. Tun-, tutoring opportunities and training opportunities are coming up through professional learning, um, on, on October twentieth. Uh, November will be in full implementation of the plan. We'll continue to monitor, review data plans. We will have liaisons that will work with the buildings, um, individually to ensure that we are meeting the needs, um, and continuing to monitor progress and adjusting those plans accordingly, um, as needed. December through April, we'll complete, we'll sta-, we'll start and complete our plan through that eighteen weeks where we will then monitor, go right into spring testing and review that data as well. What are some of our resources? We currently use iExcel, um, as a data plat-, or excuse me, as a platform, um, where we can collect data. That is a reading and math component. ExactPath is a newer platform for us through the Adventum, um, platform, and we will receive additional training on that, and that focuses, I think it's important to note that it focuses not only on reading and math, but that literacy component when we're talking about the Virginia Literacy Act and how that aligns to the plan itself. Um, and then VDOE resources, they were gracious enough to offer us two platforms, um, two free platforms, and those platforms were announced last week, which is Ignite for reading and Zern for math, and we will receive, we will receive additional information, and we will provide training to our staff and our tutors on that as well. Yes, sir.
I don't know if you want questions now or if you want...
I will take them whenever you...
So the, the several different, um, uh, digital platforms that are listed here, do they overlap to some extent in what they provide? Um, so how do we handle that?
iExcel and ExactPath actually do not overlap. Those are our two platforms that we're using. I, I can't give you specifics on, um, Ignite and Zern until they send us some additional information, but I will be happy to provide updates to the board.
I'm just trying to not have too many different platforms, all trying to do the same thing.
Yes, sir.
That's confusing both, for everybody.
Absolutely, it is. Um, iExcel is something that we've been utilizing for a while for that data monitoring. ExactPath would be more specific to this, um, high-impact tutoring session, and, um, ExactPath has the element of focusing on not only the content, but grade-level, specific material differentiation, and it also focuses on skill and standard level, our, our standards for Virginia, um, to ensure that we are aligned, um, when providing that grade-level instruction. So action items and next steps, we, when we were building this, working on the All-In Plan, that is, um, I'm happy to say is, is ready to go for preview. Um, we'll be working through that. We do have a principals' meeting this week where we'll be speaking to the principals and getting some input as far as that goes. Some informational texts that we have would be those division dashboards, um, and providing those links to our staff, uh, for easy access in one collected item that they can move through, um, and be able to house everything again, 'cause we don't want things all over the place or to make this any more difficult on folks. Um, we, we certainly wanna see this as a positive, and we wanna help our students move the needle to achieve some of those components that were discussed earlier in the board meeting of getting to those avenues of the CTE pathways and beyond, uh, for our students so that they can truly enjoy the, the academic, um, experience here at Lynchburg City Schools.
Thank you. Questions?
Is this initiative funded?
Yes, ma'am, it is. I, yes, it is.
And it comes with groups of, so a tutor would have up to a maximum of ten students that they will, at one time, or?
Well, that'll be dependent, uh, too, but the maximum we would hit with ten would be ten. The more individuals we can get in front of our students, it's our goal to reduce those small groups, um, even lower than that.
And so how are they identified, the students?
The students are identified, um, what the recommendation was, was from the SOL scores, um, for fourth through eighth grade. So a non-proficient student would fall between the ranges of zero and three ninety-nine, and an at-risk student would be considered to be at four hundred, up to a four forty-eight in some categories. Our third-grade students are measured from the Virginia Growth Assessment that they have taken this fall. Their score started to come in, um, October sixth, and then there was a scaled, uh, scaled score that we would look at to evaluate what would be non-proficient and what would be at-risk on that as well.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Those are determined at state level?
Yes, ma'am.
And I know one of the policies was saying that if you were a tutor, you could only be paid through LCS and not through another source? Is that, was that, or is that a different tutoring?
Yeah, we do have a tutoring policy that we probably do need to revisit, 'cause I think I, I recall what you're, what you're talking about.
It's, it's on list.
Yeah, uh, the policy is saying that if, um, teachers can only be paid by LCS if they're tutoring a student who's in their class. So if I have a student on my class roster, um, to, to tutor them, I'd have to be paid via LCS. I couldn't be paid by their parent or, you know, some other outside source. But if they're not on my class list, then I can tutor and, and be paid by the parent or whatever that is.
But that's not this tutoring program?
No, that is not, no, ma'am. That is not.
Edward, do you need an action on this item tonight?
Uh, we, it's really not clear, so we aired on the side of, just in case somebody goes back and says, did your board, did you give your board a report to approve your plan? We put it on here as an act.
So are you looking for a board approval?
Yes, I am, sir.
Is there a willingness to make it an action item tonight?
Yes, it says action.
Second by, Ms. Preston? Ms. with Dr. Carter. Any discussion on questions? Madam Clark, would you please call them?
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Ms. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries. H zero.
Did we just make it an action item?
It is an action item.
So we just voted on it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. That's what I thought I was doing.
Yes, okay.
Go ahead, second one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, the next one is Adopt a Classroom, um, and we have another art donation. I'm gonna let Dr. Wodoka talk about that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, so we are thrilled that J Crew, that's the clothing, uh, provider, not our director of instruction...
Not J Crew.
Partnering with adoptaclassroom.org to provide art teachers to the city of Lynchburg, Lynchburg City Schools, uh, with twenty thousand dollars. Um, so selected teachers of up, up to fifty will receive an equal portion, uh, depending on who, who needs it. Um, and those, those, if approved, those funds are distributed, uh, the week of October sixteenth. So, uh, we, by policy, bring these, uh, larger donations to you for your information.
So is this the whole company or just Out and Forest?
That's a good question. I, I think it's the, like, J Crew corporate, I think.
Oh, okay.
Move. Mr. DePaul may make some motion, there's a second. Checking any discussion on it. Let's call the roll. Madam Clark?
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Ms. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three, annual required public notification.
Yep, so every year we are required to notify the public parents, um, in our community of these, this exhaustive list of things here. Um, we typically do it in October, and most of the information can be found on our website. Um, our LCS budget information for the current year is not up to date because we're still waiting for, obviously, the Calc Tool and the, to finalize that budget, but, um, the links are up to date just for information that any parent or community member, um, wanted about our school division.
I didn't, this is not act...
Nope, I just need to have this as a public notice, um, and have it available to everyone.
Item number four?
Item number four is the request to move the, um, November seventh school board meeting, I believe, to November fourteenth. Uh, it's Election Day and schools are closed during, uh, November seventh.
I move approval?
Second.
Dr. Day and Ms. Laurie, any discussion? Dr. Carter?
That's the day right before the VSB.
Yes.
If we have one of these long nights, so I hope when you all are preparing the agenda, you keep that in mind. 'Cause I could be...
You blame it on Dr. Edwards.
We're out in fifteen minutes.
Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Dr. De-, Mr. DePaul?
Doctor, please.
Yes, sir. Ms. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries, H zero.
Thank you.
In terms of school board member reports, in, in interest of time, what I will say is if you have one, uh, please feel free to chime in. Uh, you know, school board member reports.
Yes, yes.
So do you have one?
Yes, I have two, in fact.
All right, go ahead.
Um, Facilities and Finance Committee met on October third. Uh, we reviewed briefly the budget calendar that was presented to the full board on September nineteenth. Um, there's not really anything for the Facilities and Finance Committee to do until that process reaches the board. The initial stages, as Dr. Wodoka mentioned earlier, involve starting at the school level and working up from there. Um, we considered also the information about athletic coach stipends that was presented to the board, uh, previously on September nineteenth, and, uh, the administration is considering the stipend levels for all the different personnel categories that have special stipends attached to them, and, uh, possible ways that our stipend levels might be compared to those of neighboring districts to help us determine what levels are appropriate. We also brought up the ongoing concern that regional facilities are not carrying their fair share of health insurance claims paid out in excess of premiums received, uh, but it is a rather complicated issue, uh, for instance, depending upon the details of contracts with individual units. Um, so, um, our previous, uh, CFO had begun looking at that, um, and, uh, before we can make much progress, I think we're waiting for our new permanent CFO to be in place to help us sort out the details of that. So it's, that issue is not forgotten, it's just, uh, we need the qualified person in place to make progress on it. And, uh, we did, uh, I guess it's not so critical, but we did set future meeting dates for that committee. We had formerly been planning meetings one at a time, but we've now got them scheduled through the rest of the, uh, term of this board.
Thank you. Because this, uh, healthcare, we were contributing about three hundred eighty-four thousand dollars as of last year. That'd be a significant save. Thank you. Anybody else from any committee reports?
Um, I've got for Governor's School, they're not having their next meeting till December sixth, but for recent events since September, this update is September fourteenth, the anatomy and physiology classes had a guest speaker, Dr. Richard Newton, a radiologist and parent of a CVGS graduate, graduate. September sixteenth, CVGS was open for an optional Saturday session from nine AM till noon. Um, September nineteenth, anatomy and physiology classes had a guest speaker, Elizabeth Hope's, a local nurse practitioner. Um, the board met, the foundational board met, um, at a CVGS at noon on the twentieth, and, um, September twenty-second, Mrs. Chaimont, uh, drove the juniors who were conducting research with fruit flies to the University of Virginia to meet with Dr. Hirsch, an expert with, um, this model, um, organism. Um, upcoming events, um, October seventeenth, the CVGS School Advisory Board will meet at CVGS at noon, and the twenty-first, they will open, will be open for an optional Saturday session from nine till noon, and the twenty-sixth will be the first parent-teacher conference night. It'll be held from five to seven, and also on November four, fifth first, um, from five to seven.
Thank you. Other reports? Dr. Carter?
The STEM Academy met September the twelfth, and the report is there are twenty-nine seniors, thirty-two juniors, and of the thirty-two juniors, nine are from LCS. The senior orientation was August the ninth, one day before school, and the junior orientation was August the tenth. They're hosting or having mock interviews for students. That will be Friday, November the seventeenth. Scholarships, if anyone wants to support a student at STEM, contact Susan Cash, and she's also looking to expand the number of juniors to five more students, and also looking at pursuing per pupil funding and advocating for that at the state level. Want, she wants to grow the number of students to sixty-five, and they've had some unexpected expenses or unanticipated expenses. One is, a filter is needed for laser, um, device and also the academy insurance increase, and the next meeting is November the fourteenth at eleven o'clock.
Thank you. Other reports? Dr. Day?
So, um, the Ad Hoc Discipline Policy Review Committee met on September twenty-eighth. Um, along with Student Services staff, we worked on a questionnaire that will go out to teachers, counselors, staff, bus drivers, um, it, pretty much anyone we could think of that has contact with students in the schools or school activities, asking their input on existing policies or perhaps new policies that relate to, um, handling discipline issues in the school. Um, we're expecting to have the results by October twenty, and we'll, we'll review them at our next meeting, which will be our, on October twenty-sixth, and at that point, we will decide what, if any, are issues that committee wants to look at.
Thank you. Other reports?
Uh, we received a report from the Beacon of Hope to indicate to us that, um, twenty-nine students were, were, visited Randolph College, or with the Future Centers, uh, Future Center students, and they, uh, applied for college on that day, of which, of the students that went, twenty-nine were accepted on, on that day, or twenty-one were accepted. Twenty-nine went and twenty-one were actually accepted on that day. Uh, Lynchburg City Council recognized four graduates of Beacon of Hope and Vectra Space Women in Marching Program, all of whom are LCS graduates or current employees. The Beacon of Hope also took fifty students out to, uh, Falwell Airport to experience careers in aviation, and that was something that we mentioned when we talked about, w- working on some kinds of internships, so Beacon might be a good, um, entity to talk with concerning that. In October, members of Beacon of Hope traveled to Detroit to meet with leaders from over four hundred communities who have promised scholarship programs around the country. Um, and Beacon of Hope also relaunched its Middle School Heroes Program with Sandusky and its Kids to College Program with Paramount this year. And I think that's about it. Did I leave out anything, Anthony?
Ma'am, you hit it right on the head.
Other reports? Dr. Carter?
The Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee, we will be contacting, or, um, Attorney Tros will be contacting individuals regarding the Legislative Breakfast, which is scheduled for November the third at eight-thirty at EC Glass. So save that date, please, and we will, um, get with everyone.
Uh, there was an email that we have pancake jamboree same day. So will the co-, committee reconsider rescheduling? Has there been a conversation?
Pancake jamboree, what was it?
Well, generally the pancake jamborees were six-thirty in the morning until s-, at night.
Some of, some of these, uh, get two breakfasts.
Yeah.
Oh, no. Some of these political personalities were doing, uh, flipping pancakes. They may not be able to come to the...
I'll let Mr. Tros know that. I'll let Mr. Tros know that.
The Partners in Education, we did, the last time we met, we met at Vector Space. And we, there were some requests for, finance requests for uniforms at Bass Elementary and hair products for Sandusky Elementary. We did work on the breakfast, the pie breakfast, which will be on March 14th. The plan, we're planning for that, but it'll be on March 14th. And I think that was the major things. We were given $1,000 from the Education Foundation to assist LCS families when basic needs or barriers to education are identified, which are not covered from the division-level budget. And we were able to purchase uniforms for two elementary-age students who were last enrolled in Bass Elementary. And we're able to provide Sandusky Middle School with hair products for their students. And then we talked about gift ideas for the pie meeting and then evaluation forums for the stakeholders of partnerships that we have. And then also the pie day breakfast will be on March 14th.
Thank you. Dr. Edwards?
And I know pie is meeting, but March 14th, generally 7 to probably 10-ish is the breakfast with the superintendent for the Ed Foundation?
Yeah, I think there was, I was talking about, there was a slight conflict, so that's why.
It's a big conflict.
Yeah.
That's a huge conflict.
Previously above.
It's almost like the pancake jamborees.
Might want to.
Have too much on the plate, I think.
Yeah, just only because it's the same folks that come to the breakfast with superintendent as the pie breakfast.
Okay, the Regional Business Alliance?
The Ed Foundation breakfast is, I believe, at the University of Lynchburg.
And is it?
March 14th.
March 14th.
Okay.
Hey, you're good.
Well, they said also the meeting of, the purpose of this meeting is to bring awareness to the Partners in Education program and invite new business organizations to join in.
All the businesses are usually at the breakfast.
We have a meeting coming, so this week, so yeah. I'll bring that back up.
Thank you. Hope you're doing a comment, Dr. Edwards.
Okay. First, I'd just like to thank Heritage Elementary students for being our first group of guest students and teeing off that process. They did a great job, as did our two high school reps who joined us for the first time. It is National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th. So I wanted to acknowledge that. Give a couple of the things we should be celebrating, National School Lunch Week, which is this week, Disability Awareness Month, which is this month, school bus safety awareness, and it is also National Bullying Prevention or Anti-Bullying Month. On October 18th, and I think one of the student reps shared this, is the Wear Orange Day for bullying prevention and support of a bully-free zone in Lynchburg City Schools. Keeping it short.
Thank you, Doc. We'll do board comments for Ms. Laurie.
Okay. Now I want to thank everybody that came and spoke. And I'm glad that now, after seeing Mr. Wodaka's and his team's hard work, that we are developing a plan going forward. So those that worry about a plan, now they know we have something in place.
Mr. DePaul?
No comments.
Ms. Preston?
No.
Dr. Carter?
No.
Dr. Day?
No.
In the interest of time.
Mr. Andrews?
Just wishing Mr. Tros a speedy recovery. Hope he feels well.
Mr. Jaleel?
I was glad to see Mr. Day come back from his bout with COVID.
Thank you.
I got no comments, so thank you. Informational item, we have a governance training coming up, October 13th, in Charlesville at VSB's office, starting at 9:00, 9:22. Academic Success Committee meeting, October 17th at 3:30 p.m. School Board Work Session, October 24th at 5:00 p.m. here in School Admin Building. October 26th, 3:30 p.m., Ad Hoc Discipline Committee meeting. And the next school board meeting will be now on November 14th. It says November 7th here, since we approved, November 14th at 5:00 p.m. here in the School Admin Building. Ms. Day, that will be modified?
Yes.
To the informational item to November 14th?
Yes.
Now there's, we have a closed meeting, so I'm going to read the the notice for closed meeting, right? Tuesday, November 7th, change LC's. We go into a closed session, set a notice of close. The board chair moves that the Lynchburg City School Board said, oh, no. The school board chair recommends the school board approve the certification. It's just not certification. What am I reading here? Is it 10 o'clock and my brain has gone dead? Pursuant to Virginia Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1, the school board needs to convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters, the superintendent's evaluation. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? Mr. DePaul?
Second.
Dr. Day? Madam Clark?
I'm sorry, didn't I hear who made the motion?
Mr. DePaul.
And I second it.
Mr. Jaleel?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston? Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
We are in closed session. We'll just continue meeting here. They can turn off the mics. Mr. Ross, can?